Uh oh, where'd you guys go?
Hold on.
Everybody just appeared here.
Hold on one second.
Just exit, exit the full screen. Brenda's always doing magic tricks on us.
No, someone, someone has, hold on.
Michael Mejia, you're sharing your screen.
Yes.
Um, turn it off, please.
There we go, I just.
Great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
Madam Chair, uh, this is the Chancellor. Um, do we need to do anything to remind Brenda to open up the public meeting? It just, it says right now, it just shows that it'll open soon.
Right, um, and so if you're not talking, we probably need you to go on mute, uh, because I can hear a talking or television or something. Um, but yes, um. I think, um, Board Chair, uh, Madam Chair, uh, I'm sorry, Board Clerk. We, are we letting everyone else into our virtual room?
We are.
And are they here?
Yes, they are.
And can the board see, um, or is... I'm sorry, can the board see, or is this only something you can see? Oh, you're on mute.
Okay.
I believe everyone can see.
Yes, we can see.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so we will take a report out from closed session.
Linda. At tonight's closed session, the board voted to ratify the appointment of the following public employee contract, which is subject to contractual agreement by the Chancellor. The board voted to approve settlement agreement with Hatton Construction Management in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Motion, trustee Withrow, seconded by trustee Brown, eyes seven, nose zero, abstain zero, absent zero. Madam President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice President. We will now move to item 2.5, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And roll call, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? I'll come back to trustee Brown. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Yes, thank you. Trustee Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll go back to trustee Brown. Okay, she's not, she's not present for the call, but the motion carries.
My name wasn't called?
Oh, excuse me, student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Is student trustee Contreras here?
No, she said she had an emergency.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Excuse me, uh, I had my hand up and I was trying to be heard, but, uh, uh, I didn't get called on.
Okay, trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Thank you. I wanted to ask that, uh, an item be moved from action to, uh, from consent to action, and that is item 7.3, it's personnel approval.
Okay, 7.3 has been moved from consent to action.
And with that modification, I vote yes.
Trustee Bonilla, this is General Counsel Warden. Point of correction, the readout from closed session did not include the settlement with SEIU.
Okay, we can go back to that, um, to that item, Madam Vice President.
I don't have that information with the specifics on there. Brenda, do you want to send that to me very quickly?
Mr. Warden, can you?
The settlement in the amount of settlement for the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
We, we can come back to that item when we're ready. Can I have an approval, uh, 2.6 approval for the minutes?
Okay, so it was moved by trustee Withrow?
Yes.
And the second by? Do we have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Brenda, I'm here, by the way, student trustee Contreras.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, and so we'll go ahead and take a roll call on that, and, um, Madam Clerk, can we also unmute, um, trustee Brown? She, I believe she's on the call.
Okay. I believe she can unmute herself.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and take roll call and approval of the minutes. Thank you.
Trustee Withrow?
That sucks.
Trustee Withrow?
Bill, you're muted.
Uh, for this section of the agenda, I would, I would just unmute all trustees, uh, since we're gonna go through this quite quickly.
Somebody muted all of us. Somebody muted all of us.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Brenda, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I've been on the call since six o'clock, or I'm sorry, seven o'clock. So I'm on, I'm on via telephone, so that may be why you're not getting the prompts through the laptop.
What are we doing here?
Yeah, that's why I have everyone muted, trustee Bonilla, because, um...
Right, because of all the, yeah, all the bad. That's fine, you can go ahead and mute everyone, and I believe we're on approval of the minutes, and we just need a roll call.
Okay, trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes, and if you could also look for my phone number on the dial-in and unmute me there, please.
Okay. And trustee Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? Thank you. And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Student trustees weren't called again?
Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to item 2.7, Associated Student Government Reports. Do we have, um, student, associated students on the line?
Hello, I'm here.
Yeah.
Silly.
Hi!
Hi, everyone.
Hi!
Hi!
Hi, Israel.
This is fun, and Merritt is here as well.
No.
Hello, so Spencer, do you want to go ahead?
Um, well, thank you for volunteering me, okay. So, um, good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellors and Ex-Stroud. Um, I wanted to first start by saying we would like to acknowledge the hard work that everyone has done. I know this is not an easy time, so I do want to bring the students, acknowledge everything that you are doing, but what we wanted to ask in general was that dissemination of the decisions that have been made by the board and that the district provide more information to students, because the more students I talk to, a lot of them are very confused as to what they do next. It's like the direction of how they're going to deal with graduation, how they deal with, or any kind of direction, they're just having a hard time directing themselves. So I think right now, we just asked the district and the board to deliver a clear or to disseminate clear the information that's being delivered to students, and hopefully more, because even though we get the information, regular students aren't on the board, aren't on associated students, and it's not easy for us to deliver to every student. So I think that's what we mostly asked, and that's what my executive board wanted me to deliver to all of you. And another thing I wanted to report is that Merritt, our executive board and our inter-club council are going to have a Zoom meeting this Friday, mostly just to talk about, or a town hall mostly just to talk about what can be done next.
Am I up?
Thank you, go ahead, um, yes.
Okay, thank you, Spencer, and, um, hello, everyone, it's fun and interesting to see everyone via Zoom. And, um, wow, so, so, um, I think first thing that I do want to say, um, I do want to say thank you to Spencer to, uh, for sending me the link to the Zoom call, and that's why I'm able to join this meeting. And I also want to extend my gratitude to the board, the admin, and the faculty for being proactive and flexible as the changes were just rapid. And, um, moving on to online, Peralta, moving on to online learning raises a bunch of questions on equity, and, um, there, um, I, I was able to, uh, reach out to some students, and, um, they had lots of questions as to what the next steps are, but, um, to shed light on the most urgent ones, there are some students who have little to no access to computers and the internet, and, um, having that as, um, an urgent need, uh, I, I, I am just not hearing as to how, uh, Peralta would be bridging that gap, and there would be some students who might not thrive as well, um, in online learning. So I think that's another thing that needs to be addressed, and, um, and I hope, I, I'm advocating, and I'm hoping that the faculty can do a Zoom call test run in the next week, hopefully for all online classes campus-wide, so faculty and admin can map best practices, especially challenges and faculties and students' ends, and gather the resources so that we can bridge those gaps. Again, thank you for claiming that public safety is a priority, and I am a believer. I do believe that it is imperative that Peralta will provide quality education whilst this is happening. And I'm also grateful for, um, VPS's Tina, um, for she's able to, um, host a Zoom call with me, just so we can ha- hash this out and, um, disseminate the resources and information, and echoing what Merritt, uh, had said, um, I think the communication piece is vital as of this point. I too am confused as to where we are going, and, um, I do know that a lot of decisions are still being made right now, um, but, but I think really doing our best to hit different modes of communication, text, um, Peralta email, Canvas mail, can actually alleviate s- some of the tension that is, um, amongst the students, even the faculty. So, again, thank you for the hard work that you do, and all the best.
Thank you for that, Israel. You bring up some really, um, some really good points around access. Um, are there any other, um, student presenters? Okay, um, thank you for that. So I just need to take a, a point of order, a point of privilege. We started this call pretty quickly, this is definitely a new format. I want to welcome, um, everyone who is participating on this call. I know internet is a little unstable, so my apologies, but really welcoming everyone in a spirit of collaboration and a spirit of change. Um, these are very, very different in trying times, um, for us, and I just want to acknowledge that, um, this has been a very difficult last two weeks, um, for us as a community and for us, um, in the larger global context as well. So I, I just, just want to give my, um, warm, felt appreciation, and it's really, really good to see all of you, um, because we've been stuck at home, uh, for the past two weeks, so I love seeing all of your faces, so just happy to be here with you all. Uh, and with that, we'll go ahead and move to, uh, Classified Senate Report.
Yes, the Peralta Classified Senate is here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, good evening, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Stroud, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have two campus reports. The first report is from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. The March seventeenth Classified Senate meeting was rescheduled in response to COVID-19 and the campus closure. The next regularly scheduled meeting is April twenty-first to be held via Zoom. The Title IX presentation originally scheduled has been postponed. And lastly, from Berkeley City College, the Senate is looking into a work-from-home support system setup for staff who need assistance due to the shelter-in-place order. The second report is from the Laney College Classified Senate. The Laney College Classified Senate would like to thank Chancellor Stan Beck Stroud and all district and college leadership for their continued communication about our ongoing response to the COVID-19 crisis. The Senate will hold its first remote meeting this Thursday and report back to the Peralta Classified Senate for the next Board of Trustees meeting. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your attention and support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you so much for that. Um, we'll move to item 2.9, the District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening, President Bonilla, members of, uh, the Board of Trustees, the Chancellor, and everyone else. Yeah, we've been, uh, getting a lot of emails and so on, uh, you know, and I want to thank, uh, Vice Chancellor Siri Brown and the rest of the people and the Vice Presidents and so on, actively, uh, trying to get word out on all of the different issues to the students and to the faculty. There's still, obviously, a lot of concerns of, uh, among faculty on, uh, how to do after, uh, August sixth, and I know that they've been busily working with, uh, the people who have volunteered to help out in terms of, uh, the online aspect of, whether it's with Zoom or with, uh, with Canvas. Uh, there's obviously more things that need to get done, and faculty have been, uh, you know, very concerned. Uh, the CE faculty, the sciences, uh, will have expressed concerns around now the labs. Uh, and so these things are ongoing, and, uh, individuals have been stepping forward to really try to see if we can get these issues resolved. They're not easily resolved, uh, but hopefully, uh, in the next week, week and a half, we'll have a clear idea. I think part of the difficulty that Mark and, uh, the, uh, crisis management team has to look at is how dense is the information that's coming out, whether to faculty or to students. We're trying to put so much information into these, uh, items that sometimes I think the information gets lost, so, uh, Mark, I hope that, uh, what you're doing in terms of, uh, crafting the messages are much more succinct and, and to a point rather than to ten thousand points, because I think that really, really affects the ability of people, uh, to understand, and particularly for our population here in, uh, Peralta. My concern goes out to those students who are ESL students, who have to go through those dense messages and try to better understand, uh, what they have to do. I hope that the colleges are trying to break it down, and student services are trying to provide some more concrete, you know, breakdown of that information to them, because we have to be very, very concerned as we move to this online platform that all of our students are being contacted and all of them feel, uh, feel some ease or, or less anxiety about going on, uh, going on to the onboard, uh, platform. So, uh, thank you very much for the work that Classified have been doing, administrators have been doing, faculty have been doing. I think that this has been a tremendous, tremendous amount of work that has to be done, and obviously much more work, uh, that has to go forward. Ultimately, before April, we need to have a decision about summer session in terms of whether it would be, uh, all on the, online or not, uh, because we have to make those, uh, arrangements, uh, for that six, uh, six weeks. So there's, uh, that graduation and all of the other kinds of decisions that have to be made, and I know that, uh, the crisis group and the Chancellor is trying to address them as, uh, speedily as possible, but I think that when messages go out to faculty, being clear and succinct and not have so many items, would probably be much more beneficial. Uh, and the, uh, District Academic Senate and the, uh, local college academic centers, uh, obviously want to work closely with, uh, the Presidents, uh, the Chancellor, the Vice Chancellors, uh, and everybody in order to ensure that we have the smoothest transition, uh, when, uh, April sixth comes around. Uh, my hopes is that there is much more communication going out in the next week, uh, in preparation for that, and the Chairs and the Deans and the Vice Presidents all feel comfortable. My hope is that, uh, faculty, even while we're on this hiatus, are contacting, uh, their students and maintaining some level of contact with their students, because, uh, we lose so many. I've been getting emails personally from some of my classes of students, you know, losing their jobs and needing to go out and find other jobs, and the, uh, classes that they were worried about, and whether or not waiting such a long time that will delay them and create, and have other problems of housing and other things that they're concerned with, uh, uh, come, uh, April sixth to see if they could come online. So my hope is that faculty will try to, uh, maintain contact with those students, because, uh, everybody is going to be going through some very difficult times as they transition into what's been going on, and any kind of support we could provide to help facilitate that would be really, really, uh, well-received by, uh, everybody. So, once again, um, there's concerns, but we're moving forward. We hope to have, uh, much more contact, and we hope that the students are provided the kind of information necessary to, uh, basically be ready, uh, when, uh, April sixth rolls around. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, uh, Mr. Moore. We will move to public communication, and I will ask that, um, the Board Clerk and the Vice President, uh, uh, VP Reese, if you could work together to facilitate the public communication?
Sure. Right now, I have eight speakers that are in the queue, um, and I'll start with the first three to get them to begin. Jennifer Shinowski, Kimberly King, and Ina Ray. Then let me just go on to the rest so people could line up. Thomas Randberger, John Holmes, Michael Mejia, Andrew Park, and Ma- Michael Mahia, Andrew Park, and Merrill Siegel. Jennifer Shinowski, please.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening. I want to just start by saying a little bit about my position. As PFT President, I'm here at my house tonight as a leader elected to represent all faculty on all four of our campuses. PFT officers like myself are the only faculty leaders that have this cross-district democratic privilege, as other faculty leaders are selected by their colleges or small groups of other faculty. What this means is that we are accountable to all faculty and that we are responsible to all faculty. And this, of course, is in addition to our legal responsibility to represent the interests of our unit members, which, again, are all faculty. So when there are issues or even emergencies, faculty from over the, from all over the district call us, looking for answers. And they've been doing this over the past few weeks, and we've been unable to provide those answers. Therefore, I really urge the Board to remind all of our administrators during these difficult times that as an elected representative of faculty district-wide, we must be part of the important conversations that are occurring around the many negotiable items, all of which appear in our collective bargaining agreement. And that's an agreement that the union and the district have worked together on and signed off on for years and years and years. These include things like academic freedom, faculty evaluations, department chair elections, working conditions that include things like needed supplies, supports, office space, and so on, our academic calendar, sick leave, distance education, and class sizes. It is really regrettable to me that the working relationship that's existed between the PFT and the district for many, many years has deteriorated in the last several months. The current situation is really not productive for anyone involved, and I'm certainly willing to take my share of responsibility for it and try and turn the page. I'm here tonight to affirm that I am committed to working with the district, and so is the entire PFT team. I hope that we can find a way to come together to support our faculty in what are really trying times, since the problems that we face in our immediate and long-term future can only be solved through unity and collective efforts. It's through our faculty that we can directly support our students, and our students remain the reason for our presence. Thank you for your time and continued good work as we move forward together navigating conditions that we've never seen before. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly King.
Hi. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, faculty, staff, and students. I wish everyone the best of health and safety during this time. And I urge the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor's Office to do what we are hoping the federal government and the state government will do, which is work in the best interest of your constituents. I know that you are always trying to do that. I do have a couple of concerns right now. Number one, something that the students brought up as well, and the Senate communication needs to be improved. I know it's a really hard time. I'm not saying I could do it better, but there are some confusion. There has been confusion in the communication, and I just urge you to make sure that your communication is as clear and specific and simple as possible. For example, it hasn't been clear what it means to say classes are canceled. Face, sometimes things have said face-to-face classes are canceled, but then some online instructors might feel they're supposed to continue to offer coursework or assignments. I've heard that students are actually being asked to turn things in during the time that classes are supposed to be canceled. So I am concerned that the communication is not as clear as it could be, both to faculty and to students. So, communication. Two, to second what President Shinowski said, I have been concerned that the administration has been making decisions without consulting the Peralta Federation of Teachers. And as you know, we are a collective bargaining environment, so there's a legal requirement to consult around things that are negotiable, such as class cancellations, online teaching, et cetera. So I just, I think this is going to turn around, and I just urge the Chancellor and the decision-making bodies to consult with the Peralta Federation of Teacher Negotiation Team. Let's see. I, and it's, in addition to it being legally required, that's not the main, that's not the only issue. It's also that, as Jennifer mentioned, we represent the faculty. I'm now the Vice President of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, and so I'm one of those representatives, as Jennifer said, who are elected by all the faculty at all four community colleges in the Peralta District. And so faculty as the experts in teaching and learning can also be helpful in making decisions. So it's not just it's a legal requirement, it's that we have a certain expertise, but my cat's trying to be in it, that will be helpful in things like communication and changes to the course schedules and stuff like that. I urge you to continue to consult with the Academic Senate as well, classified staff and students. Regarding the move to remote learning, I think it'll be really helpful, both for students and faculty, that things be kept as, that people be encouraged to be flexible and keep things as simple as possible. I think some faculty are feeling that they have to do like the highest-tech stuff, and we don't even have experience in it. And I feel like it could be potentially a disaster, both for students and for faculty, if we're trying to do too much at this time. There's a lot of information being thrown at us. Oh, you can learn to do this, you could do that. And I think it'll be great for the long term, but for the short term, for students who don't have access to high-speed internet or may not have the highest level of computers, it's not going to be helpful if faculty are making these requirements, like you have to take your test online and you have to use certain modes and methods. So just encouraging both faculty, encouraging faculty that they can be low-tech in our remote. That remote learning doesn't mean you have to use the highest level of technology that's available in online learning. If you're not comfortable with that, you're not going to probably be able to do it as well as would be helpful for students. And then finally, the grading of students. How are the grades going to be given? I just urge us all to try to come up with a solution that will cause the least harm to students. And I'm wondering if students are being consulted in this process, too. I know that there's issues like the pass-no-pass or the ability to withdraw without any harm, but, you know, I'm sure that you know that there's potential challenges for that related to students transferring or getting their degrees and things like that. So just, I guess I'd like to urge a higher amount of consultation with students as well. How are students feeling? Are they going to be ready when we're making this transition to online? And what is the most fair way to grade them? But thank you all for your work. I know this is a very hard, a challenging situation that we're in, and I know that us working together is going to be the best solution for everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Ina Rae. Ina Rae. Let's go on to our next person, then. Thomas Randberger.
Thank you. So I'd like to extend greetings to the Board of Trustees assembled today and to Chancellor Stroud and all the other people virtually assembled. First thing I would like to say is actually in regard to rebuilding the Merritt College administrative structure, I know that there's been a focus on that recently, and I've told Chancellor Stan Beck Stroud about this specifically, but I also wanted to extend my thanks to the entire Board to facilitate that process, because obviously, this has been a very difficult situation, but I can only imagine what things would be like if we only had four or five administrators, where, you know, now we have like 10 or 11 administrators, even if they're not all permanent, and that really makes a difference. So thank you for that. Regarding the grading policies, I can report that just at 5:30 PM today, B.C. Brown, the VPIs, the VPSSs, and Academic Senate Presidents all had a teleconference to discuss this very matter. What are the options? What sort of options are available that are least damaging to students? And in my own, I actually posted a link in the Zoom chat saying, you know, these are actually concerns from Merritt College students about, about what's going on with the grading policy. So that is starting to be addressed, and I thank the district for consulting with faculty in that regard. For student involvement, this actually is something that was an outgrowth of Chancellor Stroud's open house visit to Merritt College earlier in the semester. I've begun making the effort to attend ASMC meetings and being in contact with student government leaders. And I would like to continue that, especially because there needs to be, I think, that liaison to the students that is very important in this very confusing and unsettling time. I would encourage my fellow Academic Senate Presidents to either do this themselves or find someone who's willing to do that, just to kind of be that faculty liaison to the students. And then, to close, I guess I would also like to say that the labs issue is very, you know, it weighs in the forefront of my mind. I'm teaching physics 4B now, which is the second semester of engineering physics. You know, all the physics instructors I've talked to in the district said it would be, is a challenge to, you know, get labs going. And as a result, we're probably only going to have like half of the labs for the remainder of the semester that, that we would have had normally. So that's something to keep in mind. And I guess I thought of one other thing, if I have some time. There's actually still some confusion about Flex Day, which is on Monday, you know, which is on Monday, and is it each college has its own program? Can people check in from, you know, if they see a good workshop at Merritt or COA, can other faculty at other colleges check in there instead? And so some clarity about what's going on with Flex Day and, you know, given the urgent need of professional development to get, you know, faculty who may be starting from a very, you know, tech unsavvy place, you know, to get them to land on their feet, this is definitely a priority, and hopefully, we can get some clarity and some, you know, some direction with faculty input about this matter, since it's coming up fast. And with that, I think I will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Ina Rae, are you available? Otherwise, let's go to John Holmes. John Holmes. Michael Mahia.
Good evening, everybody.
John was there. He just didn't, he was on mute. Sorry.
I shall mute.
Am I off mute now? Can you hear me?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Yes.
John Holmes, History, Merritt College. This is not the first time I've spoken before this board. Glad to see you all. But it's the first time I spoke before this board in my role, together with Francis Howard, who is also here today as one of the part-time representatives on the Peralta Federation Teachers Executive Council. Now, we part-timers have a lot of concerns, but I think our first and foremost concern, the one that I want to talk about tonight, is one we share with every employee of Peralta. In fact, everyone who has a job in America, namely, what happens if, to the best of my knowledge, no one working at Peralta so far has gotten coronavirus, and I hope, and I hope I never learn otherwise. But if someone gets coronavirus, two weeks' sick leave is not going to be enough. The federal government has passed a law extending sick leave, which has a lot of exemptions. One of the bigger ones, I believe, affects the Peralta system. But meanwhile, all across America, workers in their unions are demanding of their employers that sick, that sick leave be extended for workers who cannot work due to the fact, due to coronavirus. Many unions, many companies have granted such extensions. You even have a small scale that being done by the CSU system and the, and the CSU system and the California State University systems, which are granting the somewhat minimal measure of 128 hours paid administrative leave for anyone who can't work due to coronavirus. So I strongly urge the Board of Trustees to listen to what people across America are demanding and in many cases getting, namely, if someone can't work to, due to coronavirus, that their sick leave be properly extended. So it's a deal with that situation. One other thing I'd like to talk about, which is before coronavirus hit, the main concern that many of us had was the plans for major class cuts in the fall. Well, the situation has changed. And one thing that I don't think people sufficiently realize, sufficiently remember, is when you have, in the past, in general, one of the major reasons for the decline in enrollment at Peralta is due to the very good employment situation. In the past, whenever there has been recessions, employment, students flock to the community colleges to take classes. We can expect that to happen again this summer and this fall. And it is, so the situation has changed, and I think it is the duty, if Peralta makes available to students the classes that they want to take, you'll no longer, my understanding from the FICMAT report, that the basic reason the class cuts was not an immediate financial crisis, but consideration of productivity, namely, too few instructors, too many instructors, rather, and too few students in the classes. We can fully expect that situation to abruptly reverse itself as early as this summer, if not this fall, due to the fact that we are now heading into an extremely sharp recession. And when people don't have jobs, a lot of them are going to want to take classes since they can't work to help them to get a job for the future. And when they want to take classes, they want to take them cheaply, which means they want to take them at community colleges. So I think it is the duty of the Board of Trustees and the administration to rethink plans for the fall and make sure that we have a, it's a duty to the community. Otherwise, Peralta is not fulfilling a submission to the community, needs to offer the classes that students are going to want to take. And so that's basically, I strongly suggest, Board of Trustees, you seriously rethink the plans for major class cutbacks, which could create a situation, the reverse of the situation in the past, with classes stuffed to the gills and students simply unable to take classes because they're not being offered. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Michael?
Good evening, everybody. I want to just say how much I appreciate the leadership of this group and how proud I am of all the people from all the campuses that are putting this time. I imagine those of you administrators with the most authority here are getting about two hours' sleep a night. And I just appreciate all that you are managing. To get right to the point, I want to support what Donald was saying about managing our communication somehow. I mean, I have seen so many of those blue wave emails with 2,000 words of stuff in it. And there's an urgency there, and I totally understand it. We're doing the same thing with our students. Are they going to pay attention to this email? This is my only chance. You have to give them everything. And we, in the photo department, are trying to refine that a little bit. We do not have the responsibilities that you do, so it's a little bit easier for us. I would simply like to see, perhaps amidst all of the other things you're doing, a little coordination with communication. Thank you so very much for all you do.
Thank you, Michael. Andrew? Andrew Park.
Hello. Thank you, Trustees, representatives, and administrators. I spoke at last week's emergency board meeting regarding the impact of the unilateral cancellations of two weeks, two additional weeks of classes. I think a lot's happened since then. And administrators, I know you heard, heard a lot of pushback from faculty from many different areas, faculty who teach second-eight-week classes who now have to try to figure out how to teach that in six weeks, online instructors who are concerned about losing students over the three weeks of extended break. And as one of the science instructors, I am concerned about being able to cover all the materials in my physics all the materials in my physics four A, so that when my students go into physics four B, that they can continue to succeed. So with that concern in the background, I'd like to thank the board and the administrators for ensuring that the updated new emergency resolution that's on Agenda M eight point five expresses commitment to working with the faculty through this crisis. Because as you have seen, faculty are the ones with the expertise. It's our D coordinators who have shined through this crisis and they are all faculty and they gained their experience in their faculty role. There are no administrators here who have experience or expertise in online or remote teaching. And in that line, I'd like to share my experience. I'm one of the few people who teach physics online in California, in the San Francisco Bay area. I teach physics 10, 100% online. I've been doing this since the spring 2016. And over the last year or so, College of Alameda has been converting our calculus-based, the general physics courses to 100% online lecture and until recently, 100% face-to-face lab. And what I will tell you is that it takes a lot of work to teach online, quote unquote, properly. So, and I look at my colleagues who are having to transition to remote teaching in on an emergency basis over the next week or so. I will share from someone who's experienced in online teaching. If they are trying to do this, quote unquote, properly, there are not enough time in the 24-hour, seven-day work week for them to actually do it that way. So when you hear from faculty that this is difficult, that we need more resources, we need administrators to work with us, not fight against us. Don't think we are just complaining because we like to complain. I share my experience as someone who's experienced in online teaching. That teaching online takes a lot of work. And regarding teaching physics lab online, I think I have as much experience as anyone who does, anyone who's trying to sell any product to Peralta does. And there are some lab classes that I'll have to cancel because I can't figure out how to do that online in the remaining semester. So please continue to, or in a renewed spirit of collaboration, please work with us. Please consult with us collaboratively. Please don't fight against us. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speaker is Merrill Siegel.
Hi. I am honored to be here tonight virtually. And I wanted to say hello to Chancellor Stanbach Shroud and the board members. Greetings. And I wanted to thank you, really thank you for your dedication to education here at Peralta and for your leadership in tough times. I hope you are all doing okay, taking care, and your families are doing well. I know it's really tough for a lot of people and it's a time where we have to have compassion, not only for others, but for ourselves as well. We can no longer do everything as we want to do. And that said, today I am speaking merely as a faculty member and union representative, but first and foremost, as an English teacher and as someone who has also taught E S O L in the Laney College E S O L department. I hope that the board and the chancellor can remember that unions are the backbone of our country, like we're not for nothing. And especially in education, the union is not just focused on what is best for us. We're not just focused on money and teachers. We are focused on the students and learning. Teachers in the Peralta District, we know what we need to have successful learning environments. We know everything about teaching and learning. Maybe not online, but in the face-to-face. And we, we know about our students and we know the struggles our students go through. We, when we met our students this spring, many of us asked our students information. Do you have access to the internet? Tell me your phone numbers. Tell me your emails. I am so glad that I have that, that information now and I am particularly using it. We are focused on how to optimize the learning of our students. I hope you will remember the importance of your teaching faculty and their expertise. And many of you know that I've been here a while and I've had a lot of time to develop my expertise. In remembering the importance of your faculty, all your faculty, please honor Peralta's commitment to the union's negotiated contracts. It is really hard in English and E S O L to miss two weeks of classes and equally hard to suddenly rev up and get the students on board for remote education, including trying to catch up on the weeks missed. The teachers' union have, has the teachers and the students in mind. It is not a selfish act to have a union or to be a union member in education. Remember, we are the expertise that you have hired and that you pay for. So please consult us and, and consider the contract. I want to thank you again for your guidance. This is a pandemic. It's an amazing time. And I'm really grateful for your leadership.
Thank you, Merrill. Israel Kezon. Israel Kezon.
Hello. This is me again, A S O A president. I think I am here, I'm coming back to paint much more vivid pictures on where Peralta students are at. I just revisited my emails and saw a bunch of questions from students that I had gathered. And this is in terms of online learning and to raise more direct questions as to how we are moving along. We, we know that there are some professors with no cameras, no computers and no internet. There also are some students with no cameras, no computers and no internet. And one tangible example was a professor of mine who held their Zoom online office hour, an informal one. And they had shared with us how they had to pick up a camera from another school where they are teaching at, because Peralta doesn't have a camera to provide to their instructors. Do we support those with little, no means, those with no experience with online teaching? Learning, like Canvas persons? I also do want to ask, is Peralta getting laptops for students who do not have laptops? And might they have cell phones? Would do they support online learning? And when will these decisions be out and be communicated to the students? Because I know that the decisions are still being made. No one has, maybe some of you may have some answers, but I think the earlier it is that we can communicate to students, the better or maybe smoother transition it can be. And I think coming in front of you, stepping out of my zone of privilege. My mom is a teacher at Alameda Unified School District and she's the department chair of special ed there. And I do hear her from 8:00 AM the morning until 5:00 PM going through a lot of resources. So that just gives me an idea as to how our faculty might be. It currently might be bombarded with resources or it may be on the flip side that there is not much resources. So I think this circles back to Professor Andrew's point. How is the administration supporting the faculty into this transition? How are we communicating with the faculty and to the students so that we can transition easier and smoother? And it is obvious that with this transition, and this is the question, is there a pass-no-pass option? How would we cater to those students who are transferring and who do need grades, knowing that their learning, their learning experience will be different? And I think this is one of the biggest questions. How do we consult students, faculty and staff, knowing that comms communications is already tricky? And how would lab classes look like? And with student services reverting online, how are we communicating the changes to students? And how are we preparing the service providers, our faculty, those who work? And student services, are we emailing to them? Is it through Canvas? Is it through Instagram? And I would like to commend Laney College for posting their online student support services on Instagram, which I have in front of me. And I do urge each and every college to please get this out so that our students can access us, because it is confusing for most of us. And I do know it's, it is, I did post a lot of questions. Again, circling back to the spirit of collaboration, unity. I think that is some, those are things that can get us through this. And I am very much grateful for you doing your work. It is difficult. It is hard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Israel. Leslie Reiman or Reiman? Leslie?
Yes, I'm here. Hi. Hi, everybody. Yes, I just want to make sure that, so I teach at College of Alameda. I teach human anatomy and major biology courses. And there are some things that I do want to, I want to back Israel up in terms of the need to address students receiving the equipment that they're going to need to continue online. I think that's very important. So I want to ask the district, I, you know, and this is my first time doing this online, so I apologize for asking this, but I, I want to make sure that, I'm going to ask the district to please provide students with computers or tablets or some way for students to have access to online classes. Me teaching anatomy, it's going to be very challenging, but I'm going to do my best. And believe me, I'm going to work really hard. Actually, my, my faculty, my department, we have been working really hard to make sure we do a good job in this. Number two, I also, so please help us with that, okay? Having equipment, that is, for the students and also for the faculty that need it. Number two, I want to make sure that we keep in mind when, as to when this decision will be made, as to how we will support those students who do not have the equipment and the faculty that who do not have the equipment, because April is coming up. Sometimes I feel like it's going to be tomorrow, okay? But that's just me in panic mode. All right. Number three, I want to know if there's going to be a protocol to deep clean the equipment that students are going to be using and on a regular basis, such as microscopes, dissecting scopes or any other equipment in the laboratories, especially in the biology labs, before returning to classes. And then also, and then number four, I wanted to urge the board, very importantly, that to ensure that new protocols are followed moving forward in our biology laboratories or any biology, any laboratory where students are tactile, that we, we enforce or follow a protocol that ensures that everything is, is disinfected for the safety of everybody. The flu kills a lot of people too, right? So, and, and it could be one of us. So I mean, I'm just thinking about the big picture here. I want to make sure that all of us in the world are safe. An impossible task, but I want to bring the attention to the board, you know, those points. I have a background in microbiology, so I'm always disinfecting things for my students. I go as far as cleaning the models that my students use every semester with soap and water to make sure that they don't have as many microorganisms to deal with, but that's just me. I don't know if anybody else is doing that, but I'm really concerned about the use of microscope because your eyeballs are right up against the ocular lenses. And I know that when things started to happen in, in China, I, my, my major biology students, I told them and I had them clean the microscopes, ocular lenses with alcohol, 70% alcohol, before they used the scopes. And so, you know, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And, and please continue to collaborate with us, district board members. Thank you for doing what you do. I know it's a lot of work, but faculty are working really hard and we're willing to work with you, but just keep us in mind, because we have, in our hearts, we want the best for our students, okay? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. One last call for Ina Rae. Are you in the collective? Otherwise, Madam President, there are no other individuals' desires to speak.
Thank you for that, VP Reese. And thank you, everyone, for your, for sharing on this platform today. It's new for everyone and I'm sure the chancellor is taking notes. And with that, we will move to the chancellor's report. Chancellor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My colleagues typically sit at the dais with me, members in the community, faculty and staff. It is my pleasure to give you this report today. First of all, I'd like to take upon a personal privilege and welcome Dr. Carla Walter. As the Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration, Dr. Walter brings expertise to Peralta Community College District. That includes her 20 years of successful experience in higher education. Her former community college institutions include Chabot Las Pecitas Community College District, where she worked with at Chabot College, and State Center Community College District, where she worked at Fresno City College, serving as the Vice President of Administrative Services at those respective colleges. Before that, she served as a tenured Associate Professor in Business in Missouri State University, coming to the field after being a Chief Operating Officer in the public finance industry. And as a leader in public finance, she partnered with public agency executives in California to issue and administer over $30 billion in bonds. Both her bachelor's degree in economics and her PhD in dance history and theory were earned at the University of California Riverside. She earned an MBA from the California State University in San Bernardino. And most importantly, she is a quintessential California Community College transfer success story with an associate's degree in natural sciences from Riverside City College. Dr. Walter is a native of Los Angeles, where she lives now, lives with us here in Hayward, California. And I would like for you to join me and welcome her. Welcome aboard, Carla.
The next thing I'd like to say is, I know that I did tell the board members in this update, but I think it bears in the update, but it bears noticing in the public that we did it. We are off of fire watch, both Laney College and Merritt College successfully passed the inspections and, but for a few things that we have to finish up. They have indicated that we were off of fire, fire watch and will remain off of fire watch as long as we finish up the, wrap up those, a few strings over at Merritt College. And so I just want to say that this is no small feat. We have been on fire watch for more than a year. And it has a lot to do with the failure of the company to provide the necessary service and expertise. And it's been a tremendous expense to the district, but Oakland Fire Department has cleared us. And there are a few things that we will be doing to, to remain off of fire watch. In doing so, I want to just acknowledge the people that helped make this happen as we brought it, as we did what we call holding the hands as we pull them over the finish line. First of all, the college presidents, Dr. Tamile Gilkerson and Dr. David Johnson, they were relentless. They called for the appropriate levels of service and they
They called for the appropriate levels of service, uh, and they worked tirelessly with uh DGS. Second, I want to say that Vice Chancellor Sata was the right person to be in the room at the right time. All along in this saga, because he was key in managing the relationships and handholding to pull. The organization over the finish line and help us get off of for uh fire watch. His diligence in getting the company to complete the work is invaluable. And then finally, I want to say that G C Council uh Warden. Uh, with the addition of him, that changed the dynamics in the room. He was instrumental in redefining the needs. Uh, from the company that we worked with and he was, and he insisted on getting the right people in the room. And sufficiently escalated it to where the problem could be solved. Uh, up the organization's ladder in order to get them to have the kinds of people and the level of expertise that we needed to have. So, congratulations to Laney College, congratulations to Merritt College. And thank you with mu- much gratitude to uh Dilal Warden, to uh Lee Sata. Uh, to Tamile Gilkerson and David Johnson. Yay. Uh, if we weren't on Zoom and mute, everybody could do the happy dance at this point. The next thing I'd like to do is uh share a little bit of information about the um COVID nineteen response. Uh, we have been uh implementing a, a COVID nineteen response. And what that did immediately was have us develop our um pandemic response. Uh, plan that is uh starting to be, that is a draft that uh will be an addendum that we add to the emergency operations plan. Uh, because our emergency operations plan has a lot to do with earthquakes or responding to things like earthquakes and fires and blackouts and those types of things. But had not spoken specifically to pandemics and I think colleges across the state were having that experience. This has been a tremendously busy uh week to um nine workdays. Uh, in responding to the COVID nineteen um pandemic, we have constantly had to assess the situation. And have it informed by really rapidly changing conditions. We've had to put forth a plan. The way we consistently modify and as we execute and implement the best decisions going forward and evaluate the impact of those decisions. In terms of the organization of that, we're drawing on our collective knowledge of the national incident uh management system. Called NIMS and the Incident Command Structure, which is ICS in order to best implement Emergency Operations Plan. And to situate ourselves for possible federal and state recovery funds, including FEMA. And the California Community College Chancellor's Office. But we're really hoping to see some things like state um, so uh state block grant grants and those types of things. We're also hoping that State of California comes through with that grant and to recover some resources that, that have been required for us to be able to respond. The emergency operations team, um, and Brenda, could you show, could, uh, are you doing a screen share? Could you screen share the emergency operations team, please? That's the collaboration timeline?
Yes, it is.
Uh, I would like to uh screenshot the emergency operations team. Uh, the emergency operations team has been in daily operations meetings uh via Zoom. We're monitoring the external guidelines and we're continuing to develop and implement the protocols to support institutional continuity. You'll note that the titles on this ops org is a little different than the ICS titles. And that's because we're trying to make it specific to the pandemic as opposed to just general uh emergency. We're in, we're in the process of doing that correlation and crosswalk so that we can make sure that we are able to. Recover uh resources if they are made available. Uh, the colleges are and the district are adjusting to a very new normal. By shifting, for an example, to working remotely, we've continued to perform the work of the district in a manner that places the health and safety. Of our community first while um complying with the evolving orders. Um, we'll be transforming all of the sites into remote learning and service sites. Uh, to the extent that, that um, that's required as long as the shelter in place is in, uh, shelter in place is in, order is in place. And we have been given um just guidelines from the State Chancellor's Office and others that we could probably expect that to be. In place um, uh, and not be back at our sites uh before the end of June, if not, uh, if not later. We realize that faculty and staff and students may have, need to have access to technology if the colleges are going to continue to exist. So I've asked the tech team to purchase two hundred laptops for faculty and staff and nine thousand Chromebooks students. If we're going to keep any enrollment and continue to exist, we have to connect the students to the technology. This is about a three and a half million dollar expenditure, expenditure uh to cover the technology and the software and accidental damage. As well as consistent with the, however, it's consistent with the approved bond program and the language describing the appropriate. Use of the funds for student success and we did double check that with bond council as well. As we wanted to be able to be responsive, we have been uh acutely aware of the um quote unquote digital divide. That may keep students from being able to access technology and could make a difference as to whether they could continue their education or not. Um, we just, also just finalized the procurement of a deep cleaning proposal. I told Vice Chancellor Sata to, you know, hurry, hurry up and make that happen because I turn into a pumpkin at midnight. Uh, on the emergency resolution. And so this is the first and only procurement that we've made under the emergency re- uh resolution. And it serves, this statement that I'm making to you serves as notification to all of the boards. In a record six hours, that well within the required twenty-four to forty-eight hours that we are, have pursued that procurement. Um, emergency team has been meeting every day for several hours per day. Uh, this enabled the team to come together to identify. And follow up on items that need to have the details worked out and understand that a lot of the details we are also. Using and getting from the State Chancellor's Office, the guidelines. So as we address the issues of, for an example, let's say um excuse withdrawals. We are getting information from the Chancellor's Office. Uh, many of us are asking those questions on our list serves the Chancellor's Offices, being responsive in answering those. And then issuing some statewide guidelines around things like grades, pass, no pass. Uh, the uh early withdrawals, our students getting the, the policies and. The rules and regulations around students getting refunds, those types of things. But we also um have, though it's not an exhaustive list, we also have been working on a number of things, developing the. Uh, remote working protocols and remote instructional approaches and resources for faculty. And some of those uh dense communications that you hear the people making reference to are um some of those things where we put out. Uh, as we get information, we put out information to let faculty know about different types of resources. They're intended to be references that they can go back and uh look to um different types of things that might be supportive in terms of them being able to convert to. Remote uh services and instruction. Uh, we also provide the same types of resources to students as we get that information and are doing the same in terms of uh student services. We have, um, there are certain state and federal uh submission requirements, so we're keeping up with that in the emergency management team. We're monitoring the state and federal and local guide guidelines, monitoring the health uh organizations and CDC and World Health. As well as the Alameda County um Public Health Department. We've developed um uh perspectives around travel protocols, mail deliveries, access to campus, the essential workers list. Development of few frequently asked questions because there are lots of questions that people have. Um, looking at issues around student grades, enrollments, records, needs, withdrawals, registration and alternative. Uh, as well as will students have access to certain services like, for an example, health services and maybe arrangements for. Alternative access to uh health services, alternative sites. Um, strengthening the technology and the technology support infrastructure in the district. Uh, has been one of the areas that we've had to focus on in order to support faculty and staff and administration being able to do their work uh remotely. Regular communications and updates out to the college community are something that we have been um trying to make sure that we are maintaining and issuing. Uh, regular updates and sometimes updates more than once a day. Uh, developing uh and supporting faculty in particular professional development opportunities and training. Um, exploring different types of uh technology and software that would support. The teaching of labs and activity classes and career technical courses that typically would not lend themselves to remote teaching. We've had to take care of some regular uh processes as well. For an example, the student elections are up and so we've had to work through. Uh, uh, how we implement the student elections, but be flexible on some of the administrative processes. Because uh the students may not be able to do things like get the number of signatures on a petition. Uh, as we have uh looked at this, as, as we are all um sheltered in place. Uh, we are in the process of developing uh of planning a town hall. There's a small group of um. Uh, the team that is working on that and we expect to be able to make an announcement to uh invite people to a virtual town hall. So that students can get a lot of their questions answered. We're hoping to be able to do that on Wed- Wednesday. There's, we also are considering issues around uh student, international students, the uh decisions around. Uh, refunds of international students or um giving them credit so that while they may not be able to be here. This semester, they can return and they've already paid their fees. Um, we're looking at some of the financial implications and working with the state in a, and, and informing some of the advocacy at the state. Uh, on uh just hold harmless and making sure that the community colleges and particularly our district doesn't lose funding because of a change in enrollment. Or because of the way in which the funding formula gets impacted by this uh, by the changes that have happened as a result of this uh pandemic. Uh, and we are also looking at uh issues around making sure every employee continues to get paid. But it's not just the payroll, it's disbursements that include financial aid and vendor payments as well. We put out communication after communication after communication that has said. All employees will continue, will get paid, will continue to get paid, that pay will not be adversely affected by the cancellation of uh classes. Uh, that uh we have, we have repeatedly said that and we've gotten uh some questions um. Mainly, uh, it says all employees, but will it include the part-time? All employees. Will it include the student workers? All employees. Will it include the full-time? All employees. Will it include the classified? All employees. Will it includes the administration? All employees will receive their pay, their payroll. And will not have it um, will not have it interrupted as a result of this emergency uh shelter in place. Uh, and we've even had to have some conversations around, um, you know, how do we honor the accomplishments of the students? For an example, commencement comes up and if we are not able to have gatherings, will we have a virtual commitment? We will work with the students and try to get some ideas around that, work with the faculty and staff. Um, the board and the faculty and staff can be very proud. Uh, and secure that the team that they have at the table is working on a lot of different issues. And I appreciate what may have uh remained uh hidden talents, the fact that this uh. This current situation brings out uh those talents and I'm really seeing the, the um exhibiting of leadership. And intuition and critical thinking and fierce advocacy and protection of actually the faculty, staff and students in the district. The emergency discussions are quickly moving from the priority of concern and, and health and safety. And possible exposure as well, um, where we collaborated with the health department and determined the, the risk. Uh, and that basically is how we ended up activating the emergency process when we got some information that there may have been an exposure. Turned out that it was not, it was, you know, second and third hand and Alameda County Public, Public Health Department. Um, you know, deemed it low, low risk um uh some time ago. But that activation uh allowed us to kick into gear. Um, and so what, what does this mean? You know, our institutions will change. Uh, we have learned that in two short weeks or less than two short weeks, not three days. Uh, but in less than two short weeks, we have been able to really get a lot of work done to transform four colleges and a district. Operation into a remote environment that is heavily dependent on the technological infrastructure. And having technology not having necessarily been the strong suit in um Peralta. Uh, Community College District, I want to acknowledge the leadership of uh Musum Mahirli. Uh, who has really stepped up to the plate. As a result, he's put in places of the processes to support remote work, the help desk infrastructure. The laptop orders that were negotiated to get new laptops and get them tagged. And be able to, for us to create a system to get them out to the faculty. Uh, making sure that people understood how to use Google Voice so that people could access and do their work at home and not necessarily. Have to use their own personal data, access to the W drive so that we can get, you know, work done. So for an example, payroll that normally would have to come in to run check runs, disseminating the phone instructions. Disseminating how to access things like the E-PaaS system from, from uh home, disseminating um. Setting up the system to disseminate the laptops, increasing VPN access and the help desk support. Negotiating the uh contract to get nine thousand Chromebooks and two hundred laptops. When in, at a time when it's not available, because every institution across the state is ordering laptops and Chromebooks. But he secured that uh for us and reconfiguring, reconfiguring, reconfiguring people solve. So that we can take care of the issues and address some of the things around financial aid and even designing the protocol. So that we can have the appropriate use of FAS and this, sir. I want to, I want to acknowledge Mr. Muhi, Mu- Mahiri for doing that. The second thing is I want to acknowledge another uh star now, so I run the risk of as all of the members need acknowledgement. I want to just highlight a few of the um things that really have uh shown up differently as, as we have done this work. I want to acknowledge the work of Dr. Siri Brown. She has literally moved mountains. She's worked with faculty to convert to remote instruction and support, provide the support and resources. Uh, to look to creation of the professional developments, to unangle the policies and regulations around admissions and records and grades. And then withdrawals and financial aid and fees and dual enrollment and academic schedules and transferring articulation uh constriction. Some of the people brought up some things around transfer of labs and she's, she's collaborated with UC Systems. She's collaborated with OUSD to work between the segments in order to make sure that they will be lenient and flexible. So that our students won't suffer because of this situation. She's worked and, and managed and manipulated through the ACC JC standards with regard to this ad. Worked on the statewide addendum in order to um get, get, be, put, situate us so that we can. Uh, do this remote uh service and have continuity of instruction and services. Um, and she's also worked with faculty and staff um in addressing some issues around the digital divide. Which is how we came to uh uh pursue getting laptops and Chromebooks for the faculty. She's working with the presidents and the vice presidents and the, some directors uh and faculty and staff. And so I want to really thank her for doing that and particularly give kudos to the academic centers and the classified centers. Who have been instrumental in working with her. Uh, and I'll make reference to it in a little bit later, but a lot of the work that she's done uh, uh, has been in collaboration and I'll talk about that in a little bit. The next thing is I want to acknowledge Mark Johnson and the communication that he has done. He has done a tremendous job of getting the website up, but also he's in the process of revamping the website. So that it provides more of a um site that gives us a resource. Uh, and the website is uh called a Safe Peralta Site. And that will be for this pandemic, but also for other things where people can know there'll be. Places for students to go in to look at student resources, faculty and staff to look at faculty and staff resources, connections to appropriate links, et cetera. Uh, so I want to acknowledge that and he's doing the work to put the town hall together. Uh, and he's been at the center of virtually every aspect of this response plan. Because there's also at every aspect of the response plan, a need for clear and immediate communication. So anything from the updates to the frequently asked questions to the different types of um resources and decisions that, that. Um, have had to be considered, he's been at the center of that. Uh, issuing the uh things like safety guidelines and the travel information and the essential staff information. And the alert systems just district-wide dissemination of the surveys, because we're surveying the students in terms of their technology needs. Uh, it might seem easy, but especially in the times of emergency, clear is not clear. Uh, you, uh, a lot of times, no matter how clear we think we're being, as you've heard from the different speakers. Uh, it can be not clear enough, or you can give too much information, or you can give not enough information. Or the information can be uh, uh, not deep enough or be too succinct that you couldn't get anything from it. So he is actually managing that, walking that tightrope. Um, and from my perspective is doing an excellent job with it. And then finally, I'd like to call out uh V C Whitaker. Uh, she has been uh instrumental in helping put together the working protocols, remote working protocols and providing faculty and staff with. The guidance, uh, identifying, helping us identify the essential personnel protocols. And I particularly want to give a shout out to. And I particularly want to give a shout out to SEIU for their assistance and support in articulating their members' needs. And working with us to make sure we have ongoing conversations with SEIU and Local 39. Extremely helpful in working us, working with us to address employee wages and benefits during closure. And high risk employees and those caring for elderly, sevens, sick leave, vacation leave, those types of things. And then also determining the essential staff and functions. And, and I want to acknowledge Local 39 for their support in addressing the questions around hazmat and continuity of pay. We do not know how long this new normal will be. I would be surprised if we are back by the end of June, if not longer. But we're riding this bicycle while we build it. And we now have a draft pandemic response plan as a result of having a pandemic in this, in this world. We, we will continue to work and refine it and have it informed by lots of different people as we polish it off and carry out our roles. To support the colleges and district and meet its mission. And then I want to make a particular comment about the collaboration, because I've heard a lot of information about the collaboration. Before we, before we activated the emergency ops team and on six, a lot of the work that we were doing was just given the update. And collaborating with the health. So the first thing you see in terms of the collaboration timeline that I put before you. Is just a lot of information about the health collaboration where we work with the health departments. And then we worked with the different health leads in our district, work with the mental health counselors and you know, that type of stuff. But if you go to the next week is when it really kind of got really. What's your question? I want to say very active. And Brenda, are you controlling this share, the screen share?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I'd like to go to the next, go through the next slide over. Do you have it? Yeah, thank you. So if you, if you can go to the next slide over. Okay, no, yes. So the next week you'll see this is where there was a lot of collaboration where we were trying to, trying to make some decisions. Once we were moving to, we were realizing that we would move to remote service. On about the 10th, we got an email indicating that a possible, there was possible student exposure. And we, within minutes, were able to work with the public health department and get some information. We met with, spoke with PFT and actually PFT made the recommendation. That we cancel the next three days of classes and give faculty a chance to get professional development to get ready. We thought it was a good recommendation. And then also recommended that we move spring break from the previous, where it was formally scheduled to the following week. And with, that was a negotiated agreement to do that. And then that we would resume classes afterwards. We soon got into that and could really see that faculty were not going to be ready to be up and running. More than half of them had not even opened their canvas shells at all. So we wanted to give faculty more time. We felt like it was important to not have multiple academic calendars. Some classes were in session, some classes weren't in session. There are many who may second guess that decision, but we thought that that was important to be clear for the students. And we, you'll see that we started working with the different faculty and staff. If you go to the March, the next one for me, please Brenda. And that's where you see the classes are canceled. The key people have been the DE faculty, the, the DE leads, the distance ed leads. Have been very instrumental in working with us. We worked with, there were some faculty that were at the different campuses that agreed to support the training. So there were some, 14 faculty that were doing that work with us as well. We worked with staff across as well, because we had to figure things out around financial aid and dispersment. So you'll see that what we tried to do is identify when we worked with different folks. Sometimes we were working with union and union representatives. Sometime we were working with faculties in the area, in their particular areas. For an example, child development, whether you're going to keep the child development centers open, et cetera. We did a sponsor lapster demonstration, more than 50 science discipline faculty were involved in that. Gave us some real good information, real good input. And really enriched our conversations and decisions around that as well. You can go to the next one, please. And then you can see then that we're getting ready to go into this week. We've had just a couple of days this week because today is Tuesday. But that's also some work that we've done that is part of the collaboration. And so I expect there will be a lot more collaboration. What you can see is that as a result of the collaboration that we have done, we've worked with more than 100 faculty. We've worked with more than 100 faculty and staff, I'm sorry, in order to get a lot of these issues addressed. And there, there will be things that we will be counting on people to support us and help us. Realize or remember to address and we want to try to get it right. Because our goal and our focus is to make sure that people, that students have access to education. And that we preserve employment so that our faculty and staff can remain meaningful, can remain meaningfully employed. Our failure to adjust to this situation, those decisions will be made for us if we're not able to adjust. And so I have confidence that we will be able to. The, I'll wrap up by saying just a little comment on the ACCJC. So we got a little bit interrupted with all of this. But we are back on track to be able to speak with Dr. Stephanie Joker. In terms of the financial sustainability part of ACCJC. In the meantime, the colleges are still doing their work, completing their ICers and preparing for their visits. And with that, I would like to ask the presidents to make some comments about the colleges. And please pardon me for that long chancellor's report, but I thought it was important for you to have the update. And the information about the COVID-19 response, especially in light of all of the comments that have been made in public session today. Thank you, presidents.
Thank you Chancellor Stroud and Board of Trustees. This is Debbie Budd with Berkeley City College. And I would like to start this evening by really thanking Chancellor Stanback Stroud for her incredible leadership. She has been stellar in, in helping lead the district. And I want to thank the board for their support of that, because these are really unprecedented times. Many of you, can you all still hear me fine?
Yes.
Many of you may have seen Governor Gavin Newsom's address earlier this evening. But I just wanted to note that he gave a shout out to the community college system. Not only for stepping up and helping, you know, donate respirators that are much needed. But really noting that as we know, 60 to 70% of our first responders are trained in the community college. And I thought that was so important that he noted that and we know right at the front lines. As Chancellor noted, we have been working tirelessly these past two weeks. To ensure that we are ready when classes resume on April 6th. That our students have a comprehensive and caring learning environment. And that has happened from everyone stepping up. From our faculty doing trainings with their fellow faculty members, to our classified staff coming in and getting computers ready. We've already begun to hand out, we have 150 computers available for faculty and staff to ensure they could work at home. And we have more than double that for our students and look forward to the fantastic order. Thanks to the chancellor and vice chancellor of IT for the Chromebooks that are on their way. Just a couple of highlights of what's happened in addition to all of our COVID-19 preparation for remote learning. We just received that we received a Bay Area Math Collaborative, which includes all four of the Peralta campuses. A grant to transform undergraduate STEM education with $200,000 being awarded. So I really want to congratulate the math faculty and administrative team that's helped to work with that. I wanted to recognize Jimmy Crittison, instructor of African American Studies. That led, he teaches at both Laney College and Berkeley City College. And he led six of our Berkeley scholars to the A2 Men Conference in early March, March 6th, 4th through 6th. And they were just thrilled to be able to continue the Umosia Men Circles. To discuss issues facing African American male achievement in education. And they are really, the participants stated it was great. And they know it'll help support their student holistic growth and educational goals. Chancellor Stroud also mentioned, we've been working to ensure the elections. And I want to thank John Nguyen, who is our Director of Campus and Student Life and our student leaders. For everything they've done in ramping up the student elections so that could be done remotely. And we are confident with the participation already that we will have a full board of officers at Berkeley City College next term. Just thank you all for your work and support. And we are really confident that we're going to ensure serving our students in this very difficult time. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and members of the Peralta community. I'm pleased to give a report on behalf of Laney College. So innovation, perseverance and that good old Laney love were on display as colleagues across the campus. And I want to just highlight the fact that not only faculty, but our classified professionals and managers were working tirelessly together. To move mountains, to begin to think about how and implement how we will do remote delivery of student services and instruction. That really meets the needs of our students. And there was a lot of collaboration and collegiality on display as folks rallied together. To help provide that coaching and support. And so I'm really grateful for that. And you can actually see that on display in the board report that I attached as well. Some pictures of folks together throughout campus, helping support each other. I'm also pleased that we pulled together very quickly 11 remote teaching support coaches. Who are assigned to disciplines to support faculty as they're moving to remote instruction. And really helping with tools, answering questions, providing just that emotional and just sort of technical support that folks need. We're excited to announce again that Laney College's journals and program was selected by EdSource. As the only community college partner in the state for its journalism core program. Five outstanding students, including Jaclyn Oplogh, Manel Reg, Isis Piccolo, Casper DiGomani and Ryan Barber, Barbara. Were selected to contribute to reporting and pitching their own stories for the publications. The students are mentored by a Pulitzer nominated mentor and are being paid for their work. I really want to give special thanks to department chair, Elany Gastis, for her efforts in making these partnerships happen. And congratulations to our outstanding students. We did this amazing, challenged our online communities to take on the Laney Love Challenge in February. And to share what they're doing in their communities to spread Laney love. Our winner was a survivor of domestic abuse and is really beginning to start a support group for other survivors in the Bay Area. So that they feel empowered and feel that they can be supported. Danielle Mackey is a paralegal studies major and just said that giving love to herself and giving love to other people is really important. So I really want to thank Lorena Baldazzo, our new PIO for her creativity. And Mr. Fab Oakland Legend and Dope Era for other support of this effort. And finally, I just want to give congratulations to Susan Bradley, who just finished a National Academy of Television Arts and Scientists sponsored mentorship program. Which landed her a paid video assignment for the Center for Elder Interdependence located in downtown Oakland. Susan is creating trading videos for adults seeking to help their elderly parents. And the Oakland Ballet also asked her to shoot, shoot their rehearsal and performance at Oakland's Paramount Theater. And the Asian American Native American Pacific Islander Serving Institution has hired her to shoot a Get Out The Vote video. Susan credits the instruction from Mark Moya's photography classes and the mentorship from Steve Slitsky, the NASTIS chapter president. For mentoring her with such care. She really does say that she stands on the shoulders of giants. And we are proud of Susan and Professors Moya and Slitsky for their commitment to our students and our community. Thank you.
All right, greetings from, I usually say greetings from the island, but I think it's more appropriate this time to say greetings from San Jose. Where I'm stranded at the moment at home. I just want to give a tremendous shout out to all the staff, the faculty, the administrators and the students at COA. Who I'm so grateful for over the last 10 days or two weeks have just stepped up and shown up in so many ways to support each other. And support our college and support our students in these really trying times. We're in uncharted waters and people are really linking together to serve our community and our students. And it's just remarkable. I want to give a shout out to two faculty members, Jennifer Fowler and Deanna Brazzarami, who are DE faculty co-chairs. They have stepped up in the last couple of weeks to do a tremendous amount of trainings for our faculty. And even our staff to give them the tools for they can feel, they can do remote learning effectively come April 6th. And we have more to do, but they have stepped up every day with remarkable office hours in Zoom. Seems like every minute of the day, there's a training. So my heart goes out to them for all the good work they're doing. And then also just a shout out to a new program we developed at COA. Right before the current pandemic broke out. We got approval from the California Department of Public Health to start a certified nursing assistant program at COA. So a CNA program. It'll be a non-credit pathway. A faculty member, Genevieve Dace and our Dean of Workforce, Eva Jennings, did a remarkable job in putting that program together. And getting it through the Department of Public Health. And we are anticipating our first cohort in fall of 2020. And that'll be a non-credit pathway, so no fees to students getting their certificate in CNA. And so that is all from Alameda at the moment. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I understand that going last, I'm standing between you all retiring to your respective abodes. So I'll be brief. I just want to echo again, the hard work that the chancellor and her team have done to lead us through this unprecedented crisis. Her leadership and direction have been pivotal. I want to also acknowledge and recognize our staff, faculty and administrative team here at Merit College. But one person in particular, Monica Ambalow, who serves as our distance ed coordinator. She immediately stepped up to stand in the gap and provide some leadership and direction for faculty. Even while, doing so even while completing her PhD at the same time. So I want to recognize that. Really quickly, I also want to say chancellor mentioned the good news at Merit College about coming off the fire watch. To that, I want to add the name of our Director of Business Operations, Vicky Menzies. Who always kept a surprise of the progress at every step. And her flexibility in long hours, I think underscore her commitment to this college. I want to make sure that I got that in. Finally, some news about a student. I want to share with you that Ms. Jocelyn Cohen, a Merit student, has been selected as the 2020 New Century Workforce Pathway Scholar. Now, the New Century Workforce Pathway Scholarship Program is sponsored by Coca-Cola in partnership with Phi Theta Kappa. And more than 2,000 applications were received and evaluated on academic achievement, leadership, service and other criteria related to significant endeavors. And Jocelyn received the highest score in the state of California. So we're very proud of her and her accomplishment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's the end of my report.
Thank you Chancellor and thank you college presidents for, for those reports. We will now move to presentation on our general, general bond program.
Great. Can you all hear me? This is Lee Sada.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President Bunia, board members, Chancellor Stanback Stroud, colleagues and online community. We appreciate the ability to present to you the first of many monthly bond updates. Work has continued even though we've been working online. And I'd like to reintroduce AECOM Program Executive Keith Kajia to you. He's going to provide tonight's briefing and has been working. He's going to provide tonight's briefing and has been working diligently behind the scenes to keep the program or get the program off and running. So I'll keep my remarks short and now turn it over to Keith. Keith, can you go ahead and share your screen and take us through the update? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's great. Go ahead.
Is all the technology working?
Yes.
Good evening, President Bonilla, trustees, Chancellor Stanback Stroud, college president. It's my pleasure to report to you the kind of what we've been working on for the past month since we started our work on the capital bond program. Here's a brief agenda for what I'll cover in my brief presentation. You'll note that there's four very nice screenshots here. These are actually from the bond website, which we're getting ready to launch shortly. We're finalizing content right now. I'm not leaving any campus out. That's why you see a dashboard for each campus. The idea here is that we're going to be linking to our capital bond program. As far as progress, we're going to be reaching out to the community, colleges, as well as students, the community. Everyone will be able to see what's happening on the bond program. Again, this is all in that umbrella of transparency that I spoke about the last time I presented to you. Here's the program management organization. What we've been doing recently is working on the procurement for the construction management firms. There'll be a firm assigned to each of the four campuses. We've received proposals. We're in the final scoring stage now. We anticipate coming back to the board next month with the final selections for approval of those contracts. Essentially, there'll be a CM firm assigned to each campus that will report up to the AECOM Program Management Team. And of course, I report up to the Department of General Services. This provides kind of a single point of accountability to each campus for all the boots-on-the-ground work that's going to be going on in the field, that day-to-day contact, the coordination with ongoing instructional activities will be designated to a single executive from one of each of these firms that are assigned. One of the key deliverables we're working on is our Program Management Plan. This is really the backbone of the capital program. It defines our process and procedures of how we're going to execute the capital program. It includes 18 technical sections. It's about 60% complete at the moment. We expect to have it complete by the middle of April, which starts to really nicely align with when we're going to be onboarding the construction management firms. It's critically important when we start the construction management firms that we have the Program Management Plan, that is how we're going to do business, fully defined. Some of the first sessions we'll have when we first bring on the construction management firms will be technical training sessions, both on our process and procedures, which are documented in this plan, as well as some of the other technical tools that we'll put in place related to kind of information management, data management. We'll also be working with legal counsel to do a workshop on all the standardized contracts that have been developed, as well as actually a session on ethics as well. It's important that we're all upfront and transparent again of how we're doing business moving forward. Another element that we've been working quite a bit on is our outreach component. As I noted before, our bond website, that shell is complete. We are actually finalizing the first round of content on projects and photos, and more importantly, the outreach component. We've met with Purchasing, with Brian Slaughter and his group. We've actually been reviewing the vendor database that the district has. It's a database of about 5,600 entities that have been doing business with the district. What we're doing now is we are overlaying a local and small business database on top of that. We're relying on other agencies at the moment as far as their certification programs. They're listed here. You can see the more pertinent ones are BART, City of Oakland, Port of Oakland, and Alameda County. The CUCP, the California Uniform Certification Program, is one that really serves quite a few transportation agencies, but it's a standardized California certification for DBE businesses. We're taking these databases, we're actually pulling from them and extracting the geographic areas that are defined in the SLBE program for the district, that is the communities of Albany, Alameda, Berkeley, Emeryville, Oakland, and Piedmont. We've, from that, actually pulled about 1,000 DBE businesses within that geography from this database. We're in the process of filtering those further down to the ones that are appropriate for the upcoming work that we're going to be having. We're also laying that database on top of the district's 5,600 vendor database to see which ones have been doing business with the district in the past. The idea here at the end of the day is to create a very comprehensive local small business outreach database for which we'll have very targeted procurements for. We're also working closely with District Purchasing, which has rolled out DemandStar, which is a procurement system to actually have businesses registered to do business with the district. And so we're working closely to kind of align that database with our small outreach database. So wouldn't it be good enough just to have a list of firms, but what are those opportunities that are coming up? And in that vein, we've been working closely with procurement, with purchasing, rather, on a number of bench procurements. The idea here is to create bench services for a number of key professional services. There are 11 initial ones listed here. We have drafted about half of these RFQs to date. We're now finalizing the timeline of our outreach, as well as when we're going to actually be rolling procurements to the community, business community.
Okay. Okay. And then, did you hear my comment earlier about they actually read in the wrong, I don't know, they're supposed to read in the SEU?
Allow, you're not muted up.
The other thing we've been working on is the Program Master Schedule. Of course, we've been looking at the bond cash flow, a critical element as we prepare for the upcoming bond sales. We're actually looking at leveling this cash flow. What you see here is this is an example of the output of our system at the moment. Essentially, we've defined every project in the capital program. We've broken it down into its discrete phases. We've identified over this timeline when we expect to be spending money for different types of elements. It's still a work in progress. We're actually developing a seven, seven-and-a-half-year plan right now. This is probably version 15 at the moment of the cash flow. But you can see the bulk of money is spent in the construction phase, which is in that bottom band there, the big green pieces. That's really the big construction spend, which is the bulk of where our money's going to be spent. You know, the program schedule is a critical component to track a number of key things, including state funding milestones. We've been working closely to identify what those milestones are, make sure that we don't miss any timelines related to our state funding match. It's also used for outreach, so we can communicate to the business community when those opportunities, those projects are going to be forthcoming. Again, that drives procurements. It also allows us to work with DSA to coordinate the intake of our projects so that they can be prepared of when to expect our projects to come forward for DSA reviews. And of course, most critically, it allows us to coordinate what the campuses so that we can communicate with each campus and the students and the instructional personnel of what's happening on each site moving forward. This will be information that will be posted on our website as well, on the bond website. And then finally, just a brief update on actual projects and the progression of them. We've, over the past month, been working closely to confirm with the architects, the state funding requirements for timelines. So these are the five state-funded projects that are currently in design, the Laney Learning Resource Center and Theater Modernizations, the Merit Child Development Center and Horticulture Remodel, Rebuilding, and of course, at the color of Alameda, the AutoTech Diesel Building. We've also been working closely on defining sustainability projects to move those forward for approval. I just issued a technical memo that kind of consolidates all of the previous work that the district had done over the past few years related to sustainability. I'm going to be meeting with Vice Chancellor Sata to kind of review that strategy and come up with a plan forward on how we'll execute sustainability projects and actually pull them into the infrastructure projects as well, those ongoing infrastructure repairs and modernizations that need to occur, but to make sure that we also have an eye on sustainability and more importantly, a return on investment for those projects moving forward. With that, that's my presentation. If there's any questions, happy to take any. I don't have that question in answer slide here, Lee.
No worries. Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Keith. And then if I can have the board clerk assist with any questions from the trustees?
Trustees, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Trustee Reese?
So as I look at the master schedule that was in your PowerPoint, the question that I have is that all of the other colleges and the district begin earlier in terms of the construction portion, I'm looking at the graph. Laney, though, doesn't begin until 2024. And as I was looking at the facilities and technological master plan, I believe I saw that COA had about 89% of the buildings that needed to be taken care of, and Laney was second at 82. And so my question, of course, then is if the need, according to those master plans in terms of the renovation and reconstruction of buildings for Laney was at two, why are they the last to begin construction in our series of colleges in the district? And I'm looking at the master schedule for the PowerPoint, on the PowerPoint, rather. Was that clear?
Keith, do you want to start?
Sure. I mean, first, where the master schedule is a work in progress right now. The projects at Laney are all currently advancing. We've just started work on some of the designs for those projects. There's been quite a few renovation projects that have been ongoing as well, small repair projects.
Go ahead, Keith.
Go ahead, Lee.
I was just going to say, Trustee Vala Reese, I think, actually, in fact, Laney is earlier in this project schedule. We've already started the LRC project, and it will go out to bid as one of the earlier projects. It's state-funded, so that schedule is determined by the state. And we are rapidly advancing that project. It is in sync with the Merit CDC, and the schematic design has actually been turned into the state for confirmation of funding. And we expect that the next phase will begin in June. So I don't have the schedule in front of me right now, but if you want us to follow up with a different way of presenting the information so that you can see the projects by campus, we can actually sort. The document you're looking at is actually intended to show the projected cash flow, which is kind of a different way of presenting the information. But if this project schedule is of concern, we're happy to show that to you. I'm sorry for the confusion.
Sure. Thank you for that explanation. And if that's possible, given all of the things that you all are dealing with right now, that would be great and I think helpful for us to have both the cash flow as well as the construction projects at all the colleges as well as the district. Thanks.
Sure. And that's the intent eventually of actually posting that to the bond website so you'll have that visibility and what the project schedules are.
Any other questions by trustees? I have a couple, if the trustees aren't. So, so one, thank you for this presentation. And I, my two questions are related to when we have a shifting of priorities, such as what we heard the Chancellor mention earlier in her report out, when we are purchasing equipment that is fully within the guidelines of bond expenditures, where, where does that information come to us? How are we monitoring and managing the shifting of priorities to meet the needs of the district, as in this case around the 200 laptops and the 9,000 Chromebooks? I think that's a, that's, that's one question. And then I'll just ask the second one, which is on the demand, which is the how to work with Peralta, where is it? On the DemandStar, which is the outreach, which I think is, which is great. If I can better understand how DemandStar works with the local small business with all the other public agencies, I don't think I quite captured that, and I want to just hear a little bit more about that. So two issues, right? One, shifting priorities and how we're accounting for that, where we get to see that. And then just a little bit more on this DemandStar side. Thank you.
Sure. President Bonilla, why don't I start with the first question, and I'll have Keith answer the second question. And it's a great question about shifting priorities. And the answer is, what we've not yet done is to bring you the final version of our bond, what we call our Bond Spending Plan. Bond Spending Plan sets the budgets for each of the projects, and it's set up by campus and specifically not only includes buildings, but also infrastructure budgets. What we have not incorporated into that plan is the latest set of technology purchases. But we definitely had a lot of infrastructure money set aside, and we also had a 5% of our $800 million bond set aside as contingency. The truth of the matter is that the Bond Spending Plan is a living document, and it will change over the course of the seven-and-a-half or so years that we're executing Measure G, based on the program schedule that Keith briefly talked about in his presentation. And I think the short answer is, as we develop the plan, we'll continue to come back to you, to ask you for permission and guidance and approval of various iterations and versions of that plan. And I think what we'll be doing in the short term is doing another iteration of the plan, which will take into account this very rapidly changing environment and need for additional technology. There is no shortage of funding at this point in time. In fact, we are still spending the last tranche or the last series of Measure A before we even begin our spending for Measure G. But we'll certainly be very clear and transparent about those changes and make sure that the board has the opportunity to not only approve the plan, but to provide their input, of course, as we work closely with the Chancellor, to make sure that we're meeting the needs that we need to meet. Keith?
And just to add a little bit to that, the Program Management Information System is where we're tracking the movement of those funds eventually that will be board-approved. And we are in the process of standing up that system as well. We're getting ready to enter budgets, actually, next week. We've been working closely with District Finance on that, as far as aligning our cost accounting codes in our system with theirs. And we're going to be taking that first pass of what the initial projects have been defined and entering that into the system. We're also doing budget validation as well to ensure that the project scopes that have been defined, that there's sufficient budget in them. So again, that is a living, breathing document that'll be continuously refreshed. And again, you'll have access to that through our system, so it's a little bit more even transparent to you. As far as the DemandStar component related to the outreach, DemandStar is a portal used for purchasing that the district selected. It's a way for businesses, large and small, to register to do business with the district and identify the types of contracts that they're interested in. So they enter their own contact information, what types of services they provide. They actually align themselves to what we call a NICS code, an alignment of a service code, if you will. And that allows the district to proactively reach out to them as they register to do business with the district that they're interested in XYZ types of opportunities. In addition to that, the bond team, the Program Management Team, is proactively reaching out to the business community as well. We anticipate to do outreach events eventually. Actually, we might have to do them virtually as well, just like we're doing this board meeting, to actually reach out to the local community to describe what the opportunities that are forthcoming are. And we're actually going to have proactive emailings that are going to be going out from the Bond Program Management Team. emailings that are going to be going out from the bond program management team as we start to roll out different procurement so that we're in advance, reaching out and identifying opportunities to the smaller local businesses. We've also talked about having some training sessions so that we can also help especially smaller businesses be a little bit more responsive to procurements. Some firms are used to responding to a technical procurement. And we're happy to actually provide some training for them so that they can make the most responsive proposal that they can and really help elevate the local presence of the small local business community to our types of opportunities that we'll have. We're earmarking a number of opportunities as well. This is something that V.C. Sata and I have spoken a little bit about, identifying certain types of contracts and procurements that will be specifically targeted only for SLBE firms. So no longer are they only looking to be a part of a percentage of a larger contract, but they'll have opportunities reserved specifically for them, for firms of their size. And that aligns nicely to some of the smaller infrastructure projects, or even maybe some of the smaller sustainability projects that we have in the capital plan right now.
Keith, thank you for that. And V.C. Sata, thank you for your explanation as well on shifting priorities. I'd also like to, I believe I have trustee Brown who has a question or comments. Madam Clerk, can we unmute trustee Brown?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much for the report. I greatly appreciate the information and the update. And I have just a follow up question to trustee Bonilla's question regarding the shifting of priorities. We do definitely need to provide the resources for our students and our faculty with the onset of this new change in the way that we're adjusting to the pandemic and how to keep people safe and the continuation of education during the response to COVID-19. My question is, is it the furniture fixture and equipment or where did the laptops and computers fit in the bond program? And I think that that was a general question and I think also maybe a specific question that trustee Bonilla was asking. And we would like to just keep our eye on the ball because we'll have to continue to adjust as time goes on. And so I'm wondering, on the sort of the specifics of that question, is it, what type of line item is it that we're shifting with regard to those laptops and equipment? And is there, is there a way to integrate that, providing that, those resources which we do need to provide for sure, is there a way to integrate that into the existing plans that we have for providing education and services to our students?
Yes, sure. Thank you, trustee Brown, for the question. The answer is that we had allocated approximately, oh, somewhere a little bit above $25 million to the technology line item. It was shared and split evenly between the four campuses. And at this point in time, we haven't specifically decided, you know, which, how we're going to pull it out. But there was quite a bit of funding allocated towards technology in general. And I think as we move forward, I mean, to let me back up a little bit, the specific request for the 9,000 Chromebooks was about $3.5 million. So we have adequate funding for that. And, but this whole issue of technology has caused us to start to, to begin to think about how distance education could play a continued role in the district and how it might impact how we construct and modernize our classrooms. And I think that conversation needs to be had with a larger group. Keith and I have just tossed the idea back and forth saying, you know, it's something that we may want to consider in the budgeting going forward, but I don't think we really have a good sense yet of what that looks like. And I think, to be honest with you, right now, we are still just reacting on a day by day, week by week basis to answer the call that the chancellor has put out for us to find a way to purchase those Chromebooks for our students and to find ways to support our faculty through the distance ed technology. So I think there's more to come on that.
Great. Thanks. So if I understand you, what the response is, is that it was a technology line item and we're being nimble in the way that we perceive technology now because we are being flexible in looking forward to how we're going to use technology given this event that we're grappling with now. And we'll come back and revisit that later, which is, I think, a very good answer. I just want to make sure I heard it right.
You did. And I think you're much more articulate than I am. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Go ahead.
Thank you. Smiling at that coyness and muted now.
Okay. Any other questions from our trustees? Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Keith, Kajia, is that, did I pronounce that right? Kajia?
You got it. You got the prize.
And thank you, V.C. Sata. Again, thank you for the presentation. Very, very much appreciated. We will move on to item 4.2, Consider Approval of the Revised City College Mission, Vision, and Value Statement. May I have a motion?
Move approval.
And who was that from?
Trustee Handy.
Trustee Handy. Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Second by student trustee Stanley. Thank you. And we'll take a roll call on that.
Okay, thank you. Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown? Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U.N.?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Thank you. And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to consent calendar. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Thank you. Roll call.
Madam President, we have changes to the agenda. Sorry.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I was supposed to call on you. Can you go ahead and update, please?
Yes, let me look at it. Under Agenda Item 7.3, under Section 8, Section A, the salary has been added for Maria Angelica Garcia in the amount of $212,130. Second item, there's also a correction to the readout. There was an additional settlement. The board voted to approve a settlement with the Service Employees International Union, Local 1021 AFL-CIO, in the amount of $75,000. Those are the two items that needed to be added.
Thank you, VP Reese. We will continue on our consent calendar. I believe we had a motion. It's been properly moved in second. We'll take roll call. Thank you.
Point of information, Madam President?
Yes.
Item 7.3 is not part of the consent calendar. Is that correct? That I'd asked that that be moved to action?
Item 7.3 has been moved to action. Yes.
Thank you very much.
So can we continue with roll call, please, on consent?
Yes, thank you. Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
So I have a question. I was waiting for the motion in the second to ask my question about a consent item. May I ask that question now?
Yes, please do.
The CMAS contract for the LED lights. I have a question regarding our energy savings plan for the prop, to use the Prop $39, we have to have a energy conservation plan. And I am just wondering if the purchase of the light fits into a plan that we had established already? And what type of savings are we estimating, what type of energy savings are we estimating on receiving from the installation of the LED lights?
V.C. Sata?
Thank you, President Bonilla. That is a great question, trustee Brown. And the short answer is that there are savings realized from the project. We are using an existing contract, so we know we're with, in our contractual bounds. The specifics of the savings I don't have with me, however, and I would be happy to look that up for you and provide you that feedback. My apologies, I don't have that with me right now.
Oh, that's okay. I just was thinking that we probably had projected that we were going to install the LED lights and it was part of an existing plan and it might have been a projected saving, but I could wait to get that information. I know that LED lights are an improvement on our energy consumption because that is what LEDs, LED lights are supposed to do. I was just hoping to have the information as to how much we might be saving on our energy costs.
Yes, we'll get that information to you. And I do want to emphasize the good news here. And if we do have a timely approval, is that though the original deadline has passed, the state has said that we are within our bounds to go ahead and spend that money. And we are on track to do so and they will not sweep it back. So we do have some good news to share, but I will get that additional data for you so that. And I also believe, just as a side note, that in addition to replacing the lights and realizing some savings, we might be eligible for a PG and E rebate or two. And I will get that information for you as well. That is yet to be finalized, but there may be some older rebate programs still available for us. So more to come.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I believe we were on roll call and that was?
Correct. And so we, we ended with trustee Brown?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U.N.?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to action and we'll take our 7.3, Approval of Personnel Item. And can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And we have a second. We are open for discussion. Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you. So I moved this item to action and just I will continue to restate my objection to having administrative appointments carried out in the open session. I think they don't allow for adequate.
We can't hear you.
I say I will renew my objection to these items being carried out in the open session. With that, I have no other comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, you don't see any raised hands from our trustees?
No, I do not.
Okay. It's been properly motioned and we'll go ahead and do roll call. Thank you.
Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U.N.?
I want to emphasize that my vote here has nothing to do with the merits of the particular candidate, and I vote no.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trust Weinstein?
Yes. Excuse me. Yes.
Thank you. And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Action, item 8.1, Consider Board Vote for the CCCT Board Elections. I appear to be the presenter for this once again.
Move approval.
It's been approved. And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. That's great. And I will turn to our board clerk to help us walk through this piece.
Point of information, what is the actual motion? Is it the first nine people on the, on the ranking? Is that what we've moved?
So we're gonna, we're gonna have either the chancellor or, or the board clerk or help us with this because we have all responded to this. I just need to understand your exact question, trustee Gonzalez.
Yes. Madam Chair, I can speak to it.
Thank you.
Yes, the board asked us to facilitate the development of this vote. The board can vote to, for up to nine nominees, to send for nine nominees. I asked the board to send in their rankings and they sent in their rankings. I ranked them according to the board and gave you the top nine rankings. And so we present this as a slate to you so that you can see that you would be voting on one slate, which has the top nine names.
So I would like to go ahead and recommend that we adopt this election as a slate and include numbers one through nine of the candidates that rank the highest amongst the trustees. And it looks like it's been shared on a shared screen so that everyone can see who the top nine candidates are. So do we have a, I'm sorry, did we have a motion to approve? And it's been properly second?
Yes, we do.
Great. Is there a discussion or from any of the trustees? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take roll call.
Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
You're on mute. You gotta unmute.
Okay. So, okay. I'm saying, I'm saying yes with a caveat. I'm hoping that next year that we can really have an honest dialogue with the board about the people that we'll be selecting. There are people on there that I've, I have, I think trustee Whitro and Brown and I have the most extensive experience there. And there's, there's a name on there that would not be a choice. And there were people who were incumbents that weren't put on that list. I think that this is something, because they're representing all trustees at the state level, that we really have to have a discussion about. It's not like an election or anything like that. We talk about what people have done, how they showed up at CCCT, and that we can count on them showing up for us if we elect them to this particular board. So I think that we had to do it this year, but I think we need to go back to the old ways of actually having a discussion and so that there's information that any of us want to share with each other that we should. I personally don't just vote for a slate without knowing it. And I don't really feel comfortable with this entire slate because there are people that I felt should be on there and some that I really was vehemently opposed to being on there. So hopefully next year, lessons learned, we can have a better way of facilitating discussion for this.
Thank you, trustee Handy. And we'll move And we'll move to Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
I'll vote yes as well. I think the challenge that Trustee Handy raised is a really legitimate challenge. I asked this question in the last board meeting about the Brown Act and secret ballots. And it seems to me that what we've done is virtually a secret ballot in part. But I realize this was a complicated thing, and it's a gray area, so I'm going to vote yes and assume that our administration has done their due diligence in making sure that this process complies with the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes, and also I think Trustee Handy raises a good point.
Okay, thank you. And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to move to item 8.2, consider approval of first reading of Resolution Number 19/20-38 authorizing issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the district under its 2006 Authorization Measure A in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $65 million and under its 2018 Authorization Measure G in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million. And approving the forms and... forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more paying agent agreements, bond purchase agreements, continuing disclosure certificates, official statements, and compliance guidelines for such bonds. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
It's been moved, and?
A second.
We have a second. Discussion. So if there's no discussion, just for our viewing public, the trustees did receive background information on this. And so we've received a good amount of background information. If there are no further discussion, we will go ahead and do roll call. Nope, we have a discussion. Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you very much. I also really want to thank the administration for the background briefing that some of us received yesterday. Subsequent to that, I...
All of us received the briefing, but yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it was available to everybody, and a number of people sat in on it. And that was extremely helpful in understanding this material. And then in reading the disclosures section, I then followed up with the chancellor with a series of questions that I've raised regarding our OPEB spending. And I'm hoping that by the time we get to a second reading, the staff and consultants will be able to provide responses to that so that our disclosures are really full. And so I'm grateful for the education that we're getting on this and look forward to even more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Reese?
My question is maybe whether the FA on call at the moment might be able to just give us a sense of the volatility of the market and whether it's wise to go forward with this. Not so much whether it's wise to go forward with this, but how the current market situation affects both 8.2 and 8.3.
I can defer that question to the chancellor and let the chancellor determine how best to answer or take the question under advisement. Chancellor?
Of course, we can prepare that answer for you and give it to you. We do have the financial advisors available to make sure that they are able to do any presentation that you need around any particular aspect of this. But if you'd like, then we can take your specific questions and then prepare those for you, bringing them back to you before the second reading.
Sure, that would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Brown?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you again to the voters of Alameda County for supporting this bond. I wanted to also thank Trustee Bonilla. She and I worked on the bond committee to get this bond passed. And thank you to our facilities team and to our Peralta community, our president, who were there, many of whom were there at the bond meetings, and our chancellor for following this through. And it's something that is extremely important for our learning community, for our Peralta community. And it represents a very huge success in a very difficult time. Right now, we need these facilities even more than ever, and it's very important to do the right thing and go forward even in difficult times, which is what we pushed against in 2018. So again, thank you to everyone that was involved in supporting this bond and making this opportunity available for the community that we serve.
Thank you for that, Trustee Brown. Yes, this is very exciting to be at this juncture. Although we are in challenging times, it is still quite a feat for us to continue. Are there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and do roll call on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Student Trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student Trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes, and also thank you definitely to our building trades, who were there at the table with us, helping us get this bond passed.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item 8.3, consider approval of first reading of Resolution Number 19-20/20-43 authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, refunding bonds of the district in an aggregate amount not to exceed $25 million, and approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more paying agent agreements, bond purchase agreements, continuing disclosure certificates, official statements, and escrow agreements for said refunding bonds. May I have a motion, please?
I have a motion. A second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call.
Thank you. Student Trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student Trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8.4, consider acceptance of the swap portfolio summary reports relating to the district's OPEB bonds. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
It's been moved. I need a second.
Second.
And it's been second. Discussion. And the board clerk will help me with identifying any discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Thank you. And just to clarify, was the second by Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow? Excuse me, student trustee Stanley first?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Contr... Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Brown?
Oh, sorry, did you... Yes, I just realized you didn't hear that. Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8.5, consideration and adoption Resolution 19/20-46 declaring emergency conditions exist throughout the Peralta Community College District as a result of the threat of COVID-19 and granting the chancellor emergency authority. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
We do have a question from Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez?
Well, I think I'd like to start by just letting the chancellor introduce this item. After our last meeting, we had some back and forth. I was very appreciative of her perspective that she shared with me on what she was trying to do, and I think that the discussion went back and forth. The revised resolution is much stronger in its inclusive language. And I believe that General Counsel Warden had an amendment, but I haven't seen it exactly. I can read it, but I think that Chancellor Stroud had something here. So if not, I can move forward with an amendment, but I believe that they had drafted something.
Yes, Madam Chair, do you mind if I speak to this?
Yes, Chancellor, please.
Okay, yes, we asked that this amendment be read into the resolution that in Section 2, right above the statement that said "The district is committed to working closely with all collective bargaining units", right before that statement that we insert the statement, "The chancellor may make interim or acting appointments for the purpose of the emergency declaration. Such appointments may be extended beyond three months in duration with the consent of the Board of Trustees". And then the language that said, "No permanent personnel appointments would be made".
Thank you for that amendment. And the motion maker is?
Let me... I'm sorry, let me be clear. Let me be clear. The language was, "Permanent personnel appointments, however, shall follow the district's existing policies and procedures."
Okay. Okay.
And the motion maker is?
Trustee Withrow is the motion maker.
Okay, and we just had an amendment, Trustee Withrow. Do you accept that amendment?
I accept the amendment.
Okay. So the amendment has been accepted, the motion has been properly seconded. And any further discussion on this item? Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes, I would like to further ask for an amendment that among the groups that will be consulted and collaborated with... We've got a list, which is fabulous, collective bargaining units and classified and academic centers, that we include the student's sentence in that list. I think the testimony from our student representatives today was really telling in terms of just understanding on the ground, what is it that students are experiencing and what kinds of considerations do we need to be making? And so if there is no objection, the idea here is that the district is eager to engage in those collaborations and consultations. If there's no objections, I'd like to propose that as an additional amendment. Would ask the maker and seconder to accept that language.
Maker, accept it.
Second.
Thank you. It's been accepted.
Thank you.
In hearing no further discussion, we will go ahead and take roll call.
Thank you. Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
We're moving to item 8.7, consider approval of Amendment Number 4 for construction counsel to provide legal advice to the Department of General Services for matters related to facilities, maintenance, and operation in capital projects. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
It's been moved. And second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
President Bonilla, can I just clarify? Did we skip 8.6?
If you say I did.
Yes.
Okay.
So do we just want to go back to that one?
We'll go back. Can we do roll call on this last one? On this, on 8.7?
Yes. Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
This is on 8.7, thank you. Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes, and with the understanding that we have embedded in this cost for the vendor, the consultant, the cost of the... The cost of our technical consultant, our forensic consultant that is doing the analysis regarding the construction defect dispute. So this is not all a legal fee. I just want to make sure that's on the record as we're voting because that's a significant amount of money, and it's not just for the services of the legal counsel alone.
Yes, Trustee Brown, that's a good point. And so there are non-construction-related legal fees embedded in here that are dealing with liability issues. Thank you for bringing that up.
And your vote was a yes, correct, Trustee Brown?
Yes, it's a yes.
Thank you. And did I take Trustee Handy's vote?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes, although I'm still a little bit struggling with which are the amounts for the legal and which are the amounts for the non-legal. Can anybody clarify that?
Chancellor?
Oh, excuse me, one second, yes.
And just as a reminder, we are on 8.7. I did skip 8.6. We're going to go back to 8.6, but 8.7. Chancellor, I'm sorry.
Yes, so if I can call on G.C. Warden to address that?
Sorry, which point did you want me to address?
8.7, and they want to know which of the amounts in the DWK item are legal and which are legal and which are not.
They are all legal expenses, but to Trustee Brown's point, some of that money was paid to a consultant who is providing information to the outside counsel.
And so Trustee Weinstein was asking, how much of the contract was that?
I will need to ask VC Sata to weigh in on that because I do not recall the exact amount off the top of my head.
Happy to help.
Thank you.
Chief of Staff Warden. Trustee Weinstein, the exact amount for bond-related legal services is $330,000. The amount estimated... The amount estimated for the litigation related to the Laney College water intrusion And general fund legal services, which are mostly related to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee, is $30,000.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is, I think, this is Trustee Brown, if I'm, if I might, um,
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There's the forensic, um, the techni, the technical consultant that's doing the forensic analysis of the water intrusion is embedded in the DWK cost. And that's, so that's what my point was, that it's not all legal fees. V.C. Sata was able to identify the legal fees, so we would have to add those up and subtract from the, um, that he, um, tallied, the, the, the remaining of the total, and that is the part that is the forensic consultant. So in order to maintain the, the privilege regarding the work product, we have the consultant's fee on top or embedded in the legal fee. So that's, Karen, that's the, that's the answer to your question. It's the consultant that we need for the, um, analysis for the lady leak.
So the, uh-huh, okay, so I just want to clear, clarify again. So it's the consultant that we needed for the leak? That's one part of it. And then there's another part for the legal, for the Citizens Oversight Committee, for those two committees. And then the rest is for, um, bond? Is that, those three things?
Yes, that's correct. Trustee Weinstein.
Thank you. Well, it just seems like a lot of money.
Can I just clarify that one more time, um, given Trustee Brown's comment and, uh, V.C. Sata's enumeration? So 330K, 676K, and 30K. And I thought I just heard Trustee Brown say we're supposed to, uh, minus a certain part of that for the, the leaks and the consultant. So I'm a little confused as to how, how much is allocated for the consultant? Because it's all seemed to be embedded in, uh, by Chancellor Sata's enumeration of those three different categories.
Sure, let me, if I may, just quickly answer. It's, uh, approximately of that $676,600 number that I provided to you, uh, somewhere between $200,000 to $300,000 is for the specific consultant. And the balance of that 676 would be for the actual legal fees required to go to court. And this budget is found under Exhibit B of the attachments. It's the final page of the proposal provided by the vendor.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, so can we continue the roll call, Trustee Weinstein?
Um, yes, well, I guess, I just, is there some way to know whether we are in the ballpark here relative to other issues like this when it comes to, um, legal costs? And are we in the ballpark?
Good job.
What did you say?
Chancellor?
So the, um, I don't think that there were, yes, we're in the ballpark in terms of the, the legal fees. Um, and I'm, I, I think that one of the things that, um, we tried to clarify is that this is the, this is work that, um, would allow us to pay for those fees. We are probably about $400, $400,000 in the arrears, uh, and we're trying to pay the bills. There was a active, uh, decision on the part of the organization and working with legal to make sure that that outside expertise was available and, um, that outside expertise was ascertained by DWTK. We have to pay for that. Um, and they have continued to work, but we have not paid those bills. So this is for us to be able to, to finalize, uh, to get caught up.
We're paying for what we already used.
Yes, what we asked for and used.
Okay. So, okay with me.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll continue with Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, and we'll get back to 8.
8.6, yes. Uh, 8.6 is Consider Approval of First Reading of Resolution Number 19/20-44, Accepting the OPEB June 2019 GASPY Actuarial Report, July 2019 OPEB Supplemental Actuarial, Actuarial, um, Report, and the June 2019 Investment Performance Update and Adopting the OPEB Trust 1 Surplus Determination and Disbursement Procedures. First reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. And we have a second. Uh, we can open for discussion. Thank you.
I'd like to, um, spark the discussion.
Yes, Trustee Withrow.
This is a, um, this is an important document. I'm not a, I'm not in favor of a lot of things in it, but I do recognize that, uh, the Chancellor is trying to bring structure and, uh, visibility to a very difficult, uh, process. And we're looking at, um, a lot of money here. Uh, a tremendous amount of money, as a matter of fact, out over time, out over time, but, um, from my standpoint, um, I'm looking at 907 employees that, um, are basically our constituents. Uh, this, this, um, employee retiree healthcare is compensation for the work provided by 674 currently retired Peralta employees and 233 more in the pipeline that are qualified but yet to retire. But again, uh, I want to emphasize that what we're talking about here is their compensation. This is a part of their benefit package. It was capped in, uh, 2004 because it was readily recognized that, um, it was extremely expensive and that, uh, over time, there was no way that the, uh, institution, the district, if you will, but the institution could, uh, cover it. So it was capped. There are a lot of things you can get into here, but one of them, since we're talking about projecting out what the liability is, uh, we're looking at a, what is called an, a discount rate. And that's not well spelled out, but that is a rate that is the, uh, projected return on the investment of the retail, of the, um, funds, the funds held in trust. Uh, these funds are invested in the, um, capital markets. They're invested in the, in, in that area because they are a capped, um, kind of, uh, portfolio of money. Uh, I think most of us recognize that, uh, we cannot put taxpayer funds at risk in a general sense beyond FDIC insured or something that is more secure, such as treasury paper. This is a cap system. It's a, it's a, um, supposed to be a cap system. It's not clear in this resolution where the discount rate is going to be defined, how it's going to be defined. It was currently at six and three-quarter percent. Then it was moved down to 3.5%. Both are not accurate. As of December of, um, end of December of 2019, the five-year return was 5.84 since inception, which was about 10 years, 5.86. So it's nowhere near 6.75, but well above 3.5. And the reason that they, Actuarial dropped it to 3.5 was because the institution kept dipping into the pot, therefore making the funds, if you will, held in trust in a revocable as opposed to an irrevocable status. And back to the last year, they've started using the term that this is a revocable trust.
Don't step through, Bill.
Pardon me? Anyway, I don't know, I don't know what that was about, but, um, I would like to put forth two amendments to the proposed, uh, resolution, recognizing that we're, this is a, a, a reading tonight and gonna read it again. But two, um, amendments. The first would be, whereas it is recognized that a condition in Section 4, 3.4B of the indenture, where the district is basing their foundation for withdrawing from funds held in trust for retiree healthcare, calls for affirmation that, in quote, "Any amounts held in trust are or will not be required for payment of current or future retiree health benefit costs, which is an impossible condition to be met prior to 2047." Whereas the recognition of the estimate process in defining a surplus in Trust 1 and the testimony of the current Actuarial that the defined liability is approximately 50% accurate, 50% accurate, meaning 50% of, is not accurate. All funds withdrawn as, in quote, "surplus" are to be considered loans to the district at a 5% annual interest rate. And the district will deposit funds immediately at all times when it is necessary to bring the balance up to the forecasted liability. Those are my two, uh, proposed amendments. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee. Um, I'd like to have, um, Trustee Brown come on the line.
Uh, am I unmuted?
Yes.
So I understand the, um, resolution and, and the comments, the, the proposed amendment to be an effort to identify the manner in which the trust agreement is interpreted with regard to determining what constitutes surplus funds as well as what is the responsibility that, um, that the retirement board has and the district has with regard to the compensation that's part of the retiree benefits. What, this, this, the retirement, um, being part of compensation for teachers is because people would go into this profession and they could, uh, they could work for years and not be able to have a retirement assured unless there was some undertaking that was to make sure that in their, their, uh, later years, they had their health taken care of. Um, and they had a way to maintain a, um, a safe and dignified, um, uh, retirement. And that's, of course, a very important thing. It's a, it's a duty that we owe our employees. And it's a very, and I understand that we all take it seriously. And as part of that responsibility, we do need to get, um, a definition of what the trust mechanism requires in terms of determining surplus. That is something that I, that requires a legal opinion. And it's not answered in this particular resolution. And there have been trainings that have been provided, but that particular mechanism, that question about how you determine surplus, how you determine what won't be needed in the future to pay the health cost is an important question because it involves the calculation of what the cost will be to retire the bonds at the end of their maturity date. And we don't want that cost to fall back on the general fund in a way that would overtake the, um, the educational mission of the institution. And so I understand the amendment to, to be an effort to try and clarify how you are going to calculate what the long-term cost of the debt will be and what, debt meaning not just the debt service, but the debt that we owe to our employees to take care of their health, to pay their healthcare because it's a benefit that they bargained for, that we promised them. It's a contract, just like we have a bond contract. Those are contracts that we can't break, nor can we jeopardize them. So I think that this bears further review. And I think that we need to take a look at how you determine what won't be needed at the maturity date of the bond. And I think we also need to understand what it means to have surplus and how we decide what surplus. And those are issues that have to be determined through some sort of legal opinion that I have not seen yet.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. And those questions, I, um, am counting that the Chancellor um, has meticulously written down. Because again, if I can remind our trustees, this is a first reading, and this is exactly where, uh, those type of questions should be raised um, so that our Chancellor can work directly with, um, our bond counsel as well as, um, our financial advisors, um, to respond to those questions, um, when this item returns to us.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, absolutely.
Um, so at this point, um, I recall prior to, um, Trustee Brown reading, there was an amendment put forward, um, by Trustee Withrow. Um, and that amendment, um, is rather lengthy. Um, I don't recall who the motion maker was for this item.
Trustee Reese?
Trustee Reese.
So you are asking me if I'm going to take the friendly amendment?
Um, that is the question before you right now.
Well, that puts me in a hard place because it was a very complex amendment, and this is a complex situation. So I would say no because of those two reasons. Complex amendment, and this is a complex, uh, potential solution.
Can I, can I offer, um, Trustee Withrow that your, um, amendment be submitted as, uh, for review, for legal review, as was, uh, the question raised by Trustee Brown?
I thought that was what I was doing. I put it in writing and submitted it to, um, the Board Clerk. the board clerk and the chancellor before the meeting. That's intent. We're not really approving anything tonight.
It's just a review, right?
It's a review.
Our, our first read, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Okay, um, then that, that you submitted in writing to the chancellor, trustee Brown has raised, uh, some very, um, very specific questions, and um, those are under advisement right now by the chancellor?
Yes, Madam, uh, Madam Chair, uh, just trustee Withrow did submit them to me in writing today, and I did, uh, forward them on to legal, and we actually do have some legal information that I'd be glad to follow up with, um, afterwards. And, um, I now have trustee Brown's question that she raised here in the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, any other questions? Or comments?
May I just say one thing, and I think it's, it's, um, important to remind us that the evaluation of the supplemental actuarial was actually articulated in the FICMAT report as a possible solution. Um, and so maybe people already knew that, but maybe people didn't, but it helps me kind of ground and contextualize where this is coming from as well.
Thank you for that. Um, it looks like board clerk, we may be ready to do roll call on this item.
Okay, thank you. Chancellor, I see that you had your hand up. Did you have a question or an additional comment?
No, I, I answered it.
Okay.
Question about legal.
Thank you. We'll start with student trustee Stanley.
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
What are we voting on? I'm sorry.
What are we voting on?
Uh, this is item
8.6, but what, what is the context? We're passing it on?
Approval of first reading of the resolution.
Approval of the first, I guess, no, I don't know.
Oh, I, I think the board clerk would need a definitive from you.
I said no.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Brown?
No, we need further clarification regarding the issues that I raised before we could approve, before I can vote to approve the first reading. I need some clarity as to what the impact will be on the retirees, the ability to pay the retirees' healthcare benefits, and what happens to the general fund if we, uh, do not have sufficient money in the trust to pay for it. So my answer is no, pending further clarification.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll continue with trustee Handy.
I'm going to abstain from this. There's just too much complex information that's just coming forward, so I don't want to vote for something where I don't have the clarity myself. So, um, I'm just going to abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
I'm going to abstain.
Trustee Napoleia Bella Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion fails. Student trustee Contreras?
I just wanted to, uh, actually retract my vote and abstain as well.
Thank you. Noted.
Okay, um, so the motion has failed, and I will move on to, uh, and if I could just remind, um, everyone that there will be continued workshops related and, and education workshops as we started last year. Those will continue. And, and these are obviously related to, um, not just OPEB, but also our GO bonds. Um, so I will move to item 8.8. Consider approval and adoption of resolution number 19 dash 20 dash 40 to determine that an emergency exists regarding existing plumbing issues near the drinking fountain by the mechanical room and building D at the College of Alameda.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam President, may I ask a question as a point of clarification? My apologies.
Yeah.
Why are we voting on first readings? Because there's no actual action to be taken, and I know that we did that for two and three as well, but if they're first readings, we don't seemingly need to vote on them. Because they're just first readings, right?
Um, that, that's a good point of clarification. Perhaps we could have a chancellor or council provide a response to that.
Yes, I'll ask G C. Warden to, to provide a response, but typically a first reading is your opportunity to read it at first. It's not asking you to vote. We didn't put it forward to ask you to, uh, vote on anything. It's just so, so you can have a first read and have the opportunity to answer the question, ask questions. And then when you see it the second time, it is so that you can be in a position to be able to vote, uh, based on the recommendation that you've been provided.
Right.
So I'm not quite sure what a no vote on a first reading means because, um, it wasn't a, there wasn't a recommendation that you, uh, that you passed it.
Right. I think it was to, to your point, Chancellor, I think it's a, it's an acknowledgement and for the record that the trustees have reviewed the document, um, in its draft form and then in preparation for the final review, but we, we now have some, some questions that have been raised by the trustees that need some responding to.
Right. And what I've taken away from that, uh, vote is that clearly we have more information to provide to the trustees so that they feel, uh, feel comfortable enough with the material that they are, uh, able to make an informed decision and vote. It also, uh, I take away that there are some very specific questions that were raised that we want to be able to give to you, um, give the answers to use. One of the questions I have the answer to, and the other is that that I would like to, uh, to gather for trustee, uh, Brown's. Um, but it, uh, we will be prepared. When we bring it back the second time, it will be a second reading, regardless of how you treated it on the first reading. It will be a second reading, uh, and action item.
Yes, thank you for that.
Sure.
Um, Madam Clerk, item 8.8, is that still, um, have, we haven't done 8.8, correct?
Correct, we have not. Uh, and I do see that one of our trustees, trustee Weinstein, does have her hand raised. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes, I, I just want to go back to that previous, uh, um, vote. So are we keeping that previous vote? Or is the vote saying that we've read this and we acknowledge that we've read it? Or do we not need to vote?
To the, to the chancellor's point, it was presented for informational purposes in the first read. The vote is supposed to come out the second reading, which is the next scheduled, um, uh, meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Right. And, and the reason why it's in action, um, trustee Weinstein, is so that we can have a full discussion if it's in consent. We, we can't, if it's in consent, we can't have the discussion.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I just, I, I just think that, um, the vote was not necessary. There's no vote.
I think it's, I think it's just protocol. It's the way that, uh, it's the way that our structure is set up. First reads on an action item, um, in, under action will, will always necessitate a vote.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Item 8.8, I read the entire resolution.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and if there's no discussion, board clerk, do you see any discussion at your end?
No, I don't.
Thank you. We can go ahead and take a roll call, please.
Thank you. Student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Yes.
Thank you. You all sound so excited. Trustee Withrow?
I'm under the weather.
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, do, a time check, do we have to have a motion? It's no.
Well, no, I don't think anyone's going to kick us out of the room.
No, we're not, but do we, uh, just protocol, do we have to do that, or are we okay?
We're fine. Thank you.
What the hell? You left me right here. Right there.
Meredith?
I, I am here. Is anyone else hearing Linda argue with her dog?
That's not me.
My dog has gone to sleep. It's past her bedtime.
For the chair, I mo, make a motion that we extend the meeting for 10 minutes.
Second.
That's fine. Um, we're just moving into, uh, board of trustee reports. Um, we can start off with, um, trustee Withrow.
I'll pass on that.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
The 10 minutes?
No, no.
Just board, board report.
Board report that I've heard from, um, several students, particularly in the undocumented student group, who are saying that they are struggling with finances now and that they're very concerned that they're not going to be able to manage um, for very much longer. So, um, I'm hoping that there's some way that, uh, the foundation or, or or the trustees or whoever can help with funding, uh, the students.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez?
Um, I'll, I'll pass for the, for this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Pass.
Um, trustee Brown?
Uh, yes, thank you. We have heard the, um, impact of the, um, COVID-19 virus on our community, um, our, our faculty, our students, our administration, our, we've seen the response team, um, our, uh, A S, uh, AOC, uh, the CLA, sorry. Now I'm getting the acronyms backwards. Has, has, um, told us very passionately that there's a serious impact on students. Um, not, there is a digital divide. We were engaged in the effort to create equity and to try and close the equity gap and the difference in, in, um, in financial resources and, um, resources like internet, the, the, the type of insecurities that, that, um, our community was experiencing before have even been exacerbated now. So in response to that, I'm working with CCLC, uh, to carry on with the emergency preparedness, um, presentation that we were going to do in May, what it, uh, um, before the, the conference was canceled, and it will be a webinar on Thursday for trustees and, um, the rest of the Peralta community, but it's a trustee professional development program. Thursdays at noon for the next eight weeks, the emergency preparedness presentation will be responding to the issues, many of which were raised today. Uh, what is, what are we, what's happening to us in California? What are the ways that we could develop emergency preparedness? What types of plans are going on? How do we address issues like financial aid? Um, continuing to pay our employees during this time? The impact of the, um, having open meetings telephonically? So Thursdays at noon, um, for the next eight weeks, CCLC will be doing a webinar, and I've been spending a lot of my time, um, my volunteer time working to develop theories, and, uh, it'll start this week, this Thursday.
That's really good. That's really good information, um, trustee Brown. Thank you for that. And thank you for the volunteer hours.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Uh, let's see, uh, trustee Reese?
Yeah, maybe just, uh, one other additional note too as well is the chancellor's office has had quite a few webinars and a few updates for the system as system guidance. And some of the things that were brought up today specifically as it relates to grades and withdrawals and refunds, as well as science labs are all announced in that particular webinar that many people can access. But I think one of the things that the chancellor's office has decided to do, uh, which is in that update, is purchase the licensing of Labster because they realize how important and how difficult it is for the science classes in general. So I think that right now communication from a variety of different places, this CCLC webinar, the chancellor's office communications to colleges in their webinars, all of those things are incredibly critical and important in terms of trying to figure out how we all as a community and in the state continue to serve our students going forward.
That's great. Thank you for that. Um, we will, uh, and student trustee Stanley?
Yes.
Student trustee Contreras?
Hi, um, so on my end, I'm sorry if I haven't received anyone's email. I haven't been able to access my emails. I haven't been able to access Cam, because I haven't had internet for the last, I don't know, couple of weeks. Um, for me personally, the COVID virus, it's hit home a little bit more close to heart because I actually hung around and was around people that tested positive for COVID-19.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. So I've been quarantined the past 14, well, actually 16 days since I found out, so I haven't been able to get in contact with anybody until recently. That's why, um, student trustee Stanley said that I wasn't going to be able to make it. Um, that's the main reason. Um, I'm going to get tested on Thursday in Hayward, um, because I couldn't afford it to get tested for the other, um, for the COVID-19 with my insurance. So, but I know that Hayward, um, in Hayward on Huntwood, the fire station number seven is giving away, and this is just public notice for anyone that needs to get tested, um, free testing for the COVID-19. And that's off Huntwood in Hayward, California. Um, so, yeah. I've been quarantined for the past 16 days. I haven't been really been able to do anything at all.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
How are you feeling? Aside from anxious, how are you feeling health-wise? I'm so sorry.
I've had mild symptoms, like I've had a fever. Cough, um, that's going away, but like I said, I didn't get tested for that. Once I found out that they tested positive, I quarantined for, well, it's going on day 16. So like I said, I haven't been able to access anything. I haven't been able to go to the bank. My phone was shut off for a week because I couldn't go anywhere. So, um, luckily my sister came through and she helped me out with my phone bill, so that's why my phone bill's back on today. So if anyone's tried to contact me, I haven't been able to access anything because I don't have internet access right now, and nobody can come in to my unit as you know why. Um, as a precaution, so. Um, yeah, that's the update. I hope I test positive, negative for this because it would suck to test positive for something that's really affecting, and that, that's a pandemic worldwide. But, um, that's where I'm at with this. So I'm sorry if I feel a little tired during this meeting. I've just been out of it.
I'm so sorry to hear that.
We're praying for you.
Thank you. I need all the prayer.
Sending, sending you love.
Let us know if you need anything.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just right now, just, you know, just thank God Target delivers to your door, so. Luckily, that's all I've been, but I mean, that's just my update on me personally. Um, so if you guys honestly, social distancing, staying away from people, honestly, follow that protocol because it is serious right now. And it hit home because I know not just one, but several people that did test positive for the COVID-19. So, yeah. It's not good. But other than that, I just got to find a way to get in contact with my professors.
Right.
Yeah, because I don't have internet access, so it's just like, I, I don't have access to my Outlook. So I'm, like I said, I'm sorry. If I haven't, the only reason I knew about the, um, the meeting today was because student trustee Duell actually sent me a text message. And when my phone got turned back on, And when my phone got turned back on, and that's how I knew about it.
Right. Stay connected, stay connected is so important. And perhaps I can, I'll have an offline conversation with the chancellor to, to help strategize and just think a little more clearly about what, what type of support we can offer you, Romina.
Okay, thank you, guys. I mean, like I said, I just, you know, I hope that this, that's not positive. I really do. It's not a joking matter. I mean, I'm laughing, but it's out of like nervousness.
I know, I know. Trustee Handy, you're on mute.
Bro, I'm saying the most important thing is for you to take care of yourself. And we have prayers, and we'll be thinking about you. Hopefully, you'll have the results that you want.
Thank you, thank you, you guys. So I'll keep, I'll keep you guys updated and posted on what happens on my end. I don't want to be the first student that tests positive for the COVID in the whole district. That would be something.
You know you're special.
No, I don't, I don't want to be that special. I don't want to be that special.
Oh.
We don't wear ourselves.
Romina, just make sure you rest, rest. Don't, don't, don't think about anything else except for getting healthy.
Exactly.
I am, I am, I am. My grandma's making Mexican remedies.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
Wow.
Wow. And so the reality, our new reality continues. Yeah. We're keeping our spirits up. And so we, we need to do this. We need to do this for our community. We need to do this for Romina. We need to do this for our families and everyone else. Announcements, trustee Reese?
She's talking?
I am looking for my announcement. Hold on. Oh, here we go. The next regular board meeting will be held on April 7th online via the Zoom platform. The online meetings will also be televised live through Peralta's YouTube channel. A reminder that Peralta will observe the Cesar Chavez Day holiday next Monday, March 31st. And everyone, keep safe, be healthy, social distance. And Madam President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone. This concludes our meeting, and yes, be safe.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care, everybody.
Good night.